Under these conditions, it's harder to fill openings. In the face of the lingering impacts of the pandemic, there are many positive economic trend lines in New York City. Job growth is outpacing the national average, tourism is returning, and large employers are expanding their footprints in New York City. Despite the harsh realities that have upended the workforce as we know it, we are proud that our civil servants have continued to provide critical services and ensure that New Yorkers have access to resources, opportunities, and information. In the face of the well-documented national labor shortage, our city continues to make every effort to provide services effectively, efficiently, and equitably. And we continue to aggressively recruit talented candidates to fill these roles. Our commitment to providing equitable access to careers in civil service and sharpening the skills of those serving the city are at the forefront of our mind and aligned with our mission to make city government work for all New Yorkers. Central to the life of the city's municipal workforce are the career opportunities afforded through civil service hiring. As one of the largest local government employers anywhere, we offer an opportunity to serve the community and city in any chosen profession. We provide a wealth of career opportunities, a clear path for growth, and great benefits. Over 80% of civil service positions with the city are designated as competitive class. These roles require an exam to qualify and range from law enforcement, emergency services, administration, technical positions, and more. Civil service, a system based on merit and fitness, serves as the foundation on which this city identifies competent, skilled employees to keep New York City thriving. Through the civil service system, applicants are afforded opportunities based on an objective assessment of their demonstrated knowledge, skills, and abilities for every level, including entry-level and senior-level roles at our city agencies. Civil service also serves as a pathway to the middle class for underserved and underrepresented communities. It is therefore critical that we operate the civil service system competently, fairly, and expeditiously. DCAST continues to work diligently to introduce system improvements, strengthen collaborative partnerships, and reduce the provisional workforce as required, all while we keep New York City working. Among these improvements, DCAST also integrates initiatives like Civil Service 101 Sessions. Civil Service 101 is a comprehensive information session tailored to prospective employees and job seekers who want to learn more about the civil service process and make it easier to understand. The goal is to demystify the civil service process and dissociate it with being slow and arduous. By reframing the civil service process, we hope to attract the best candidates to work for our city. It is important to note that while civil service lists establish a viable candidate pool, it is indeed a process separate and apart from the hiring process executed in collaboration between our colleagues at OMB and each respective agency to fill specific roles. The hiring process hinges upon vacancy availability and funding. DCAST utilizes exams to equitably identify candidates who demonstrate the necessary knowledge, qualifications, and skills to excel in specific roles. We offer open competitive exams, which are available to anyone who meets the minimum qualifications. We offer promotion exams, which are available only to permanent city employees who are seeking a promotion within their career track. And we also offer qualified incumbent examinations, which are available to those who already work for the city as a provisional employee in certain job titles after two or more years of service. DCAST has worked to improve the cycle time of the examination process and to break down barriers to careers in civil service. On average, over the last five years, DCAST has administered 180 exams per year to more than 100,000 candidates and established over 150 eligible lists for agencies to hire from each year. Paramount to DCAST's vision of ensuring equitable access to civil service and city government, DCAST has proudly created a community-based footprint for civil service application and examination through the opening of one computer-based testing and application center in each of the five boroughs. In addition to establishing a community-based presence, DCAST has moved forward with the digitization of our work and utilized automation to provide faster service. This is evidenced through our computerized testing system and our education and experience exam systems, which provide instant tentative results as soon as the candidate completes these exams. For candidates who disagree with the rating received by DCAST, we allow them to initiate, transmit, and track appeals of their ratings within their online application system dashboard. In an effort to widen the net and provide more opportunities for interested candidates, DCAST launched a pilot program in fiscal year 22 called the New York City Bridge Exam. Through this pilot, DCAST departed from our traditional testing process in which we offer one exam for one title. The New York City Bridge Exam allows candidates to apply for one exam, pay one application fee, and take one test that can be used for up to 10 job titles. The New York City Bridge Exam opened for filing in April of 2022, and DCAST received over 4,000 applications. Later this month, the multiple-choice test will be held for these candidates. This new test format allows DCAST to offer a greater quantity of exams annually without increasing the need for staffing resources. DCAST's Office of Citywide Recruitment, OCR, promotes the vision that the city of New York is an employer of choice with a growing, talented, and diverse workforce. The work done through OCR is integral to our targeted recruitment efforts. OCR conducts extensive outreach to educate the public and current employees on civil service career opportunities and manages the city's 55A program, which affords qualified persons with disabilities an entry into city government without the need to take civil service exams. Since its inception in 2015, OCR has participated in more than 1,500 events and reached nearly 75,000 participants. They are also the division responsible for organizing and facilitating the Civil Service 101 information sessions. In response to the pandemic, in April 2020, OCR switched to virtual events. Over 23,000 participants have joined approximately 481 events between April 2020 and August of 2022. OCR is now back in the field and participating in both virtual and in-person events. As part of these events, OCR partners with sister agencies to host agency spotlight sessions to highlight their hard-to-fill recruitment needs for each agency. This includes partnerships with agencies such as HPD, CCRB, Emergency Management, FDNY, and others. To attract prospective employees, DCAST also hosts City Talk panels, discussions to spotlight employees across various agencies. These events serve as opportunities to promote city careers, the many different city agencies, and the work employees perform across these agencies. We also issue a monthly newsletter to job seekers and career services partners across educational institutions, community-based organizations, faith-based institutions, and others. This newsletter highlights current exams that are open for filing and open job opportunities across different agencies. Beyond our recruitment outreach, we've also established other pipelines for those interested in joining city service through fellowships and internships. As the city's public university system, the City University of New York, or CUNY, helps funnel talented, college-educated candidates into government through our collaborative Civil Service Pathway Fellowship. This initiative connects recent graduates with full-time careers in civil service, including competitive pay and benefits. Candidates selected to participate receive professional development, build networking and mentorship relationships, and specialized training. Similar to the Civil Service Pathway Fellowship, each year, the Urban Fellows Program recruits nationally for a nine-month fellowship program that provides participants with a unique opportunity to work with the current city agency decision-makers and insists in the implementation of public policy. Each cohort consists of 25 recent graduates who are selected from a pool of hundreds of applicants from across the country. It serves as an entry point into city government and public service. DCAST also facilitates an annual summer internship program, collecting and posting internship opportunities across the city and providing learning opportunities to all interns. This year, three courses were conducted: Civil Service 101, Unconscious Bias: Why It Matters to You, and Interviewing and Networking. DCAST also assisted agencies in providing mandated training, such as sexual harassment prevention training, to their summer interns. Recruiting a world-class workforce is only a valuable investment if we can retain and develop that talent. With that in mind, DCAST continues to establish and maintain opportunities for professional growth throughout an individual's civil service career through the DCAST Citywide Training Center, the CTC. The CTC provides employees with opportunities to learn new skills, strengthen existing abilities, and engage in career-driven programs. The CTC has expanded its reach to employees by offering live webinars, computer-based training modules, and in-person learning at the training center or an alternate agency location. Although in-person learning had been paused due to the pandemic, we're happy to say that both agency-specific and open enrollment classes have resumed. Our upcoming fall training catalog will contain more than 50 class titles available in person at the CTC. Professional development is available for all employees through DCAST Learning and Development. A catalog is published three times per year with hundreds of programs offering across six portfolio areas: executive development, management and supervision, no-cost learning, personal development, and technology skills. We also have a robust portfolio of New York City-specific programming that includes cultural awareness and inclusivity, programs focused on professional practice areas, and programs offered by sister agencies. DCAST is also working to develop the city's human resources community through the development and management of the New York City Human Resources Academy, New York City HR Academy. This program is designed for and by city HR practitioners and thought leaders. The curriculum focuses on common trends, best practices, emerging issues, and case studies for topics related to personnel management. The goal of the NYC HR Academy is to equip agency HR professionals with resources and the network needed to align their agency performance with the city's policies, structures, and initiatives. With multiple stakeholders in the city's ecosystem, we strive to provide a level playing field for New York City's workforce, meet the business needs of city government, and ensure compliance with federal, state, and local laws. We are committed to ensuring that the city's workforce is diverse and inclusive and that all communities are afforded opportunities to engage with civil service career opportunities. To achieve this goal, we work to ensure that employees who are classified as provisional have a pathway to permanency. A provisional employee is an employee who has met the minimum qualification requirements for the job and may be serving satisfactorily but has not taken a civil service exam. We have made it a priority to address this issue, and I am proud to share that in tandem with the city's mandate to reduce the number of provisional serving across city agencies, the city of New York currently has 10,131 employees serving provisionally, which is an all-time low. This number represents an overall decrease of 73% since the start of provisional reduction efforts began when the provisional count was nearly 38,000 in May of 2008. For the first time, the city is within compliance of this mandate, and this would not have been possible without the partnership of our sister agencies across the city and their commitment to civil service and the competitive examination processes. I would also be remiss if I forgot to thank our labor partners who also worked very diligently to help us achieve this goal. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to testify before you. Our municipal workforce is the lifeblood of our city, and we will continue to aggressively recruit, identify the best candidates, work in close partnership with our sister agencies, the city council, and all stakeholders to get the right people in place to best serve our city. We are always looking for additional ideas for how to recruit and retain our world-class workforce and welcome your partnership in those efforts. With that, happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Williams for also joining us. And I think Councilmember Ayella didn't hear that I called her name, and I'm delighted that she's here. I'm going to start. First of all, thank you for a very comprehensive list of how you're doing outreach. And I think -- Councilmember Yeager's here too. Sorry. Thank you. Of how you're doing outreach and recruiting. My question is this. Despite all of that, it's like having, you know, a tsunami outside of you that's hitting not only New York but other cities. So you can do all this recruitment, and we still have some 24,000, almost 25,000 vacant full-time positions. And what I think, as I said earlier, somebody like my colleagues who are always doing constituent work and, you know, affordable housing is not happening as quickly as any of us would like because there's nobody in the low-income tax credit office to sign off. And the fire department, as I know the head of the wonderful -- wonderful head of the fire committee will tell you, it's very hard to get an inspection from the fire department. I got a restaurant now six months waiting for that inspection because there's nobody there to do it because of the backlog. And I could go on. So my question is, despite all of your efforts, are there other things that you think that could be happening? You know, even something, I get complaints because since I've been around such a long time, everybody calls me because I'm like the 3-1-1 of complaints. And one of the issues is, if you offer somebody a salary, my understanding, I'd like you to comment on that, it has to be within the range. It has to be the lowest value on the range. That doesn't help bring that staff member to city work or to, if you want to promote somebody, it takes a long time. I think also, I'm going to bring up the very controversial topic of, I understand how we want to be back full-time, but if nobody else, other offices and departments and agencies and companies are not full-time and people choose to go there, then should we have something that gives them some flexibility? Because otherwise, are we going to be able to recruit? I think the other issue, of course, is we have the attorneys and accountants and tech people who really can go elsewhere. So is there some special way that we could be recruiting them? I know they don't have to live in the city. They have other kinds of ways that we try to recruit them, but it's not working. So I guess what I want to hear from you, are there any other strategies? Department of Buildings, according to the wonderful data analysis that the city council has done with your data, there are 489 vacant positions. Department of Health, which I mentioned, one of the greatest departments in the world, 1,189 vacant positions. Department of Social Services, goodness knows they are needed. There are, net for catching, helping, supporting, 2,256 vacant positions. Department of Environmental Protection, we want Local 97 to be implemented, 998 vacant positions. And I could go on. And the percentages are equally high. You know, I understand we don't want to hire too many people because we might have a recession. And as Richard Ravitch says today, "New York City is teetering on the edge of fiscal cliffs." I swear by Richard Ravitch. However, I still think we have to have a workforce to build the affordable housing, to make sure fire inspections are done, to make sure we're climate-ready, and that we have all the concerns we need addressed public health-wise. So what are some other strategies that may be outside of what you listed that could address hiring for the city of New York?
Thank you. So as you said, there are labor shortages across the country. That's well documented. New York City has not been spared from this labor shortage. However, despite this challenge, we are committed to providing the critical services that New Yorkers deserve effectively and efficiently. And we are recruiting aggressively to fill these current vacancies. Some of the things that DCAST can do in order to assist agencies with recruitment and filling these critical vacancies, if an agency partners with DCAST, is to assist with scheduling examinations around an agency's recruitment efforts. We can switch the schedule so that when, if an agency is diligently recruiting, we don't offer an examination in the middle of that process and interrupt. We can also share test taker information or folks who have applied for examinations who are interested in city jobs with an agency so that they can include them in their recruiting efforts. We can also include test passers if an agency is looking for that information when they recruit. I can't speak to the specifics of some of the agencies that you had spoken to, but these are some of the things that DCAST can certainly provide. Regarding the salary structure of the city's titles, I would like to turn that over to my colleague from OLR.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, Councilmember Brewer. So as you've mentioned, the salary range. Our employees, our civilian employees are governed, and uniformed employees are governed by collective bargaining agreements. And our collective bargaining agreements for civilian employees generally set forth to the new hire rate. And that rate applies to all employees with less than two years of city service. So that is a contractual mandate pursuant to our collective bargaining agreements that they be hired at that new hire rate, and any change would have to be bargained with city unions.
Is that something you're looking at as you go into contract negotiations? Because they are coming up.
So, you know, I wouldn't want to comment on the content of contract negotiations with our unions, but as always, we're discussing all issues of concern, including recruitment and retention issues with our unions.
Okay. We have lots more questions, but I'm going to go to Office of Management and Budget, and I very much appreciate you being here. So I think one of the challenges is, how does one get hired how quickly? So I wanted to know, within OMB, how do you participate in the hiring practice? How do you establish and implement personnel policy for city agencies? And I have to say again, one of the challenges, I didn't mention it before, is how quickly somebody can be hired. Because if I'm an accountant, I can go to Deloitte. I can go to an agency faster than getting hired by the city. So I'm out of here. And I want us to have the best. Same thing with, you know, when you want to get promoted. I want to get promoted at city, but guess what? Private agencies offering me. And in the past, we used to say, oh, we got the best benefits. Maybe we still do, but the opportunity to go elsewhere is a draw, as you said earlier in your testimony, because of the vacancies. Thank you very much for being here to OMB also.
Thank you, Councilman Brewer. Thank you to the committee. In terms of the process for hiring, you know, there's a multi-step process. And part of this is OMB's role, which is relatively quick. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm too close. In addition to that, you know, once our OMB process is complete, agencies still have to develop a posting. They have to post. They have to, you know, assemble candidates. Then they have to interview the selected candidates and then select. Then finally, after they've selected a candidate, assuming the candidate accepts the position, right? Generally speaking, you know, if the person's employed somewhere else, there's a multi-week wait while they switch from one job to the other. So it's inherently a slow process to onboard people, but we've been making steps to try to improve that. One of the things we've been doing is to speed up the OMB process is to try to communicate more clearly to the agencies the information that's required so that OMB can approve them. We previously used to batch the hires monthly and now deal with the hires without waiting for all hires to be approved for the month. We approve the ones that are in good shape right away. To the extent that it's possible, where, let's say you went on to hire 50 people, you know, as school safety agents, right? The agency puts in the request to hire those, and we give them a blanket par for all 50. Now, one-by-one decision on each one of them. You know, one of the problems that would happen, not that often, but from time to time, was that agencies, after we, OMB approvals, would expire after 90 days. Sometimes the agencies weren't able to find candidates during that period or weren't able to onboard them. We fairly recently extended that from 90 days to 180 days so they don't have to go back through the process of reapproval. Those are the steps we're, you know, we've taken and are looking at to even increase the speed in which we can move. We appreciate that, you know, anything that speeds up that process makes us more viable as an employer. And, you know, as you noted, you know, both on a recruiting and a retention side, you know, there's no escaping the current economic conditions and the pressure that puts and the challenges that the agencies face.
Okay. So once the, you posted, the candidate has been selected. I know you gave the example of the school safety agents, 50, but even just trying to get a public health or somebody to handle the finances of HPD's affordable housing, that wouldn't necessarily be a group of people. It might be just a few. So how long does it take? Say, for instance, I'm selected after posting, and I'm selected as a candidate. Just how long does it take to go through OMB and any other process? And is this longer than in the past? Because you and I have been around for a long time.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I have to agree with you. We've been around a while.
Me too.
Nevertheless, the process is reasonably quick for hires. The review process at OMB is generally, you know, 15 to 30 days maximum. There are sometimes difficulties, questions that need to be answered, and that involves a back and forth. And unfortunately, as you know, whenever that starts, some time gets lost. But, you know, even on, and that works for whether it's a batch of 50 or individual hires, you know, and, you know, there are a lot of the specific titles that you talked about which are exempt from the two-for-one hiring freeze. And we are looking to work with the agencies to speed up the process any way we can. And obviously, you know, to the extent that, whether the council or anyone else has ideas about making that process quicker or more efficient, getting us, helping us with our recruiting challenges, you know, we're ready and willing to take those suggestions.
Okay. We certainly want to be a partner in improving the workforce of the city of New York. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Gail. I have a question about how the decisions are made when an agency needs staffing. So we heard Gail list off some of the biggest vacancy rates, like the Department of Building or the Department of Mental Hygiene, Health and Mental Hygiene. But there are others. For example, we know the Department of Education, Department of Finance, the HPD, for example, that has the need to go in if there's an emergency situation and conduct inspections. So how are the decisions made? And how do the agencies work together, DCAST, OMB, OLR, to ensure that when there's a policy shift and there is a need at an agency, that those needs are met first?
Thank you for your question. So when an agency realizes that they need to hire, and maybe they need to hire very quickly, what they will do is reach out and partner with our agencies. And I'll speak specifically to the DCAST piece. An agency will reach out to DCAST. You know, depending upon the title that's needed to hire, let's say it's inspectors, HPD will say to DCAST, "We need to hire up very quickly." DCAST will say, "Okay, you know, we have a civil service list. Here's a list of eligible people." Or, "We have an exam in the works. Should we push it out? Should we start partnering with our Office of Citywide Recruitment and offer information sessions regarding the job?" So we'll have that back and forth, depending on what is needed, all the way through to where the agency is hiring. Once an agency hires, again, using the HPD inspector example, those are jobs where you need to be investigated before you work for the city. So what DCAST will do is work very closely with the agency.[1618.08] So what DCAST will do is work very closely with the agency. The agency will let us know who they are interested in bringing onboard. And DCAST will then expedite those particular individuals' background investigations so people can hit the ground running and start very quickly with the agency. So that's the DCAST partnership part of the role of hiring. And I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for their piece.
Thank you, councilmember. So OLR's role when agency has issues with recruitment and come to either DCAST, OMB, or OLR with those issues is largely to advise what we can do within the confines of collective bargaining agreements that currently exist, as well as to assist with any kind of labor management issues that are related to those recruitment efforts. For example, if an agency is trying to create a new civil service title, obviously, they would go to DCAST to work with them on that new title. But then OLR would also be involved in discussing that with the union. And obviously, we're also often called upon to speak with the union about any thoughts that they might have. Because, you know, our labor partners are also our partners in these issues. They have as much an interest in recruitment and retention as we do. So that's kind of OLR's role in that process.
OMB's role is really to make sure that the proposed hires that an agency feels it needs are in compliance with their budget and with the two-for-one freeze, if appropriate. With regard to, I think you sort of alluded to the idea of a new need, we've exempted all the hires for new needs from the two-for-one process. And we try to work with the agencies so that they can bring those people on as rapidly as possible.
So a follow-up is, are all agencies kind of treated the same across the board? So, for example, the uniform agencies. If there is a need, let's say, at the FDNY, and the vacancy rate at the Fire Department right now is about 360 or 2%. What, how is it treated when it's a uniform agency versus when it's a service agency? Is there a difference? And is one agency expedited over the other?
So from, thank you. From a DCAST perspective, there is no priority. So if an agency comes to us and seeks to partner in order to fill critical roles, they will receive the same service as any other agency, whether they're large or small. Because we do understand that any vacancy is critical to, you know, regardless of the number.
To the extent that needs have a life safety concern, you know, OMB will prioritize those, you know, trying to move to immediately fill those roles. But, you know, it's not by agency. It's the role that people are fulfilling. And we will prioritize and continue to prioritize those that have the most, you know, pressing effect upon life safety concerns.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask about the State Comptroller. The city stated that the city fell short of its FY 2022 year-end staffing. And I think I mentioned this number earlier, 24,000 employees or 8%. And I think we are trying to get at some of the obstacles that prevent the city from reaching these year-end targets. And obviously, you're trying at DCAST. But are there, I keep trying to get you to think of other, more creative ways that we could end this shortage of staffing. And I keep asking because I know there are other places that we need to be looking. And before I say that, I want to say thank you to the following for joining us, Feliz, Councilmember, Councilmember Caban, Councilmember Barbara Moya, and Councilmember Krishnan. And go ahead. There have to be other strategies to fill 24,000 vacancies.
Certainly. And there are other things that we can do. One strategy that I have not mentioned thus far are job fairs or hiring pools. So again, depending upon the job that needs to be filled or jobs that need to be filled, DCAST could host a job fair or a hiring pool and call in all interested candidates, provide information, either virtually or in person, to any large number of potential job seekers. What we've done in the past is partner with community groups. We partner with our agencies. We partner with labor. And we would love to extend an invitation to partner with council in order to tap directly into your communities as well.
We could come up with lists. I'm interested in remote. I'm interested in changing that salary problem for the bottom of the opportunities. We're going to have to try something different. So I know that you may not be able to say that now. But if you ask me, what should we be doing? Those are some, I'm sure the audience will have other ideas. And the questions from the council will have other ideas. But now you have to try, by the end of this fiscal year, to come up with some of these staffing levels. And do we wonder, because of our concern about last year, is this 23,000, 24,000, whatever the number is, a realistic goal? Are you still trying to achieve that goal in terms of hiring?
So the 23,000, 24,000, that does, that's to bring ourselves to the fully budgeted headcount. The budgeted headcount doesn't represent a target or a goal, but instead is the maximum authorized headcount. So agencies are naturally going to be below their authorized headcount just on the basis of they're having churn, right? They're only allowed to hire up to that level. People turnover. There's going to be, there's always going to be some vacancies. You know, in terms of the challenges we have in filling the positions that are approved, you know, again, you know, the labor shortage that we've all talked about that's across the country, you know, there's no difference, you know, in New York City than the private employers in New York City, the public employers across the country. Everyone is finding it difficult to find enough qualified employees and to be able to keep.
But we want the best.
We do. And we try to, we try to, you know, everything that Barbara has discussed about what DCAST does to try to recruit people, our, you know, our sort of comprehensive web of benefits that we use to try to retain the best workforce we can and attract them, aggressively recruiting to fill the positions that we have so that agencies are out there, you remember, as well as the oversights you see before you, agencies are out there working in partnership with universities, with schools, right, to make sure that they have a pipeline of good candidates coming through. Because the best way to get the best candidates is to have the best people apply.
Okay. But do you have a goal that would be attainable by the end of FY '23? Obviously, next July. Do we have a goal that we're aiming for to address some of the issues that we know are challenging? Do we have a goal of numbers?
We do not have a set goal for the number of employees at the end of the fiscal year or some point in the future. We will continue to aggressively recruit against the approved hires we have within the budget constraints that we have.
Okay. I think that's not a great thing.
Yeah, I want to ask about overtime cost and spending. Obviously, a consequence of not having a fully staffed city municipal workforce is that a lot of money is spent on overtime costs. In FY 2022, citywide overtime spending totaled 2.2 billion, which is almost 600 million more than the year before. And according to the State Comptroller, overtime spending at the four uniformed agencies, police, fire, correction, and sanitation, reached a new record in FY '22, totaling over $1.8 billion. So is the city concerned about ballooning overtime costs? If you could go into that, what is the extent of the shortage that is responsible for the overtime spike? As well as what are some of the common contributing factors for staffing shortages at these frontline agencies?
When we look at the FY '22 overtime spend, the increase is driven principally by increases in uniformed overtime at the Fire Department, Department of Corrections, and Department of Sanitation. One thing to note is that both the Police Department and Sanitation Department have a higher headcount now than they did at the beginning of the admin, with corrections significantly down principally, they have more vacancies, principally because the, we, sorry, we authorized an additional 400 heads and they are chasing a serious retention problem. Part of that is exacerbated by the difficulty of those jobs.
Can I ask one question on that? For the Department of Corrections, we know that the total vacancy is about 862. But does that count folks that are not consistently coming into work as well?
People, people are, the vacancies are only reported for people who are off the payroll. Right? And that's another thing that's happening in these, in those three agencies, right? We talked about that headcount decrease at Corrections, where, you know, there is also, all of those agencies that have 20-year half-pay plans have naturally relatively high turnover as people retire. But with regard to those three agencies, we're also seeing in each case a reduction in the amount of available hours per uniformed worker on the front line. So higher levels of medical leave and higher levels of modified assignment, you know, like duty, depending on the department, they have different terms. And that is what's driving most of the increase in overtime citywide.
In the case of the Sanitation Department, though, it seems like, at least the report that we have here, there is zero vacant positions. At least, that's the percentage that we've been given. So if that agency is considered fully staffed, then what accounts for some of the larger overtime costs? And is there a plan to maybe hire more if the need is more in some of these agencies?
Right. The growth in overtime is sometimes correlated with reductions or the size of the staff, but often not so much, depending on the nature of the agency in some cases. I mean, you know, classically, think of police, right? If you have additional police officers, the likelihood is they're going to observe more crime and make more arrests. Arrests tend to drive court appearance overtime, arrest arraignment overtime. So there you see almost an inverse relationship. Now, they can use those guys on planned events to lower overtime as well. But, you know, we work with, we're trying to work with the agencies on overtime control. And obviously, if it's more efficient to hire additional staff rather than use overtime, we would do that. Or encourage that, I should say.
On service delivery, you know, we are harping on this topic only because I am so concerned about the affordable housing, the climate, the education, just as you are. I know that DCAST, you stated correctly, that you don't prioritize. Your job is to make it fair, do the exams, and do the outreach. But somebody has to be paying attention to the agencies that have critical, urgent agency operations that must be filled. And so who does that? Who thinks about that? And then perhaps there does need to be some kind of priority for some of the places, some of the agencies that I suggested. So are there top priorities? Are there any, if it's not DCAST, is anybody trying to identify where there is the most need and do targeting to fill those positions? It doesn't seem like it's happening to us in the outside.
I think that the agencies themselves prioritize their hires. They're out there, I think, you know, they're aware of where the vacancies are and where they're most critical in their agency. And they prioritize those hires when they come to DCAST for assistance, when they come to OMB for an exemption for the two-for-one, if they come to OLR to talk about what's possible to do. They're identifying which of those, which of those titles, which of those groups they think they need the most help. And I think that's where the prioritization takes place, rather than at the oversight level.
Okay. I mean, I don't agree with that in the sense that, you know, I think there should be an overall assistance with the agencies so that they get, there's some wind beneath their sails on trying to fill. But I appreciate, I appreciate the answer. I think we talked a little bit about collective bargaining. Are there other collective bargaining or other issues that limit the city's ability to reallocate staff? I know when we, since I've been around so long. When we did 3-1-1, we worked with the agencies to move people to 3-1-1 in the same title, was very successful. DOIT and other agencies worked together. But that is an issue. And I'm very supportive of all collective bargaining issues. But are we working with them to try to make, again, some of these positions to be filled? Bargaining issues.
Thank you, councilmember. So I will say that, you know, we work with every agency that comes to us, whether it's to OMB, to DCAST, or to OLR. We will work with those agencies and work with the unions representing those employees to see what solutions we can try to figure out, you know. And as we enter, you know, potentially bargaining again for the next round of contracts, certainly recruitment retention issues are on all our minds and it's something that we will continue to focus on.
Okay. How do you look at technology as some places to fill in gaps? We want to be very clear that I'm not interested in using technology as a basis for not hiring somebody. But are there, again, I guess that would be the role of the deputy mayors or the DOIT, now called something else. But how is technology looked upon by either OMB or DCAST in terms of how it can help with these staffing shortages?
Thank you. So yes, the use of technology has definitely assisted with the service delivery, both before there were, you know, with, before staffing shortages or after staffing shortages. Technology has absolutely helped us deliver our services more efficiently, more fairly, and more equitably to all New Yorkers. Speaking from a DCAST point of view, we have utilized technology in order to make our civil service examination process more widely available to people during the pandemic. When, at the very beginning, when things were shut down and in-person services were not available, we were able to utilize our online capability through our testing platform in order to continue to offer examinations for jobs with the understanding that, you know, one day this will end and one day agencies will need to very quickly hire. So we were still able to offer those services through the use of technology that we would not have been able to do so otherwise. And I'm sure that there are countless similar stories across the city with other agencies as well.
Okay. New York Housing Conference, obviously, is a well-known organization. And they're stating, not Gail Brewer, that the vacancy rates at units at HPD, I keep going back to this, that are signing off on affordable housing are as high as 24%. So do you know if that's, do you have any sense, even though you say it's only up to the agency, how to improve that? And then, of course, at the Fire Department, and we have the wonderful chair here, and I'm sure she'll ask more, but the Fire Protection Inspectors, those are the vacancy rates, two examples where there is high vacancy rate. Can you address what, even though you say it's only up to the agency, isn't there some other way that we should be addressing? We want affordable housing. We can't do it without this type of support.
Sure. So speaking from a personnel standpoint, there are, and again, I can't speak specifically for these agencies, but some tools that they would have available to assist would be to reassign staff within their own agency in order to cover the shortfall of, you mentioned a particular unit. They can certainly do that. Agencies will also, once again, reach out to DCAST and let us know that they need assistance in either filling roles or we're going to have people cover these roles. So we need some assistance in backfilling. A different role, and so these are tools that are available to agencies. But I can't, again, can't speak specifically for them. However, if agencies wanted to partner with DCAST in any other way in order to fill these critical vacancies, we would certainly be available.
Is there anything OMB can do? For an example, people are scared of OMB, just so you know, the agencies. They complain to me about how scared they are of you. So is there something you can do to unscare them so that they can hire these people?
Well, I don't know if we can unscare them. But, you know, we have worked and we talk about HPD. You know, I don't know the specifics about the unit you're talking about and sort of an HPD question. But OMB has approved over 700 hires for HPD in the last 12 months. Nearly 600 of them were exceptions to the two-to-one policy. I note that during this administration, the overall headcount for HPD is basically flat. It's down about 60 people on a base of 2,000. So we haven't seen a big drop in the, in the agency headcount. We work closely with the agency to try to fill those vacancies, the things that need to be done. You know, obviously, with this administration's historic $22 billion housing commitment, we're investing in affordable housing and investing in staff and filling those positions as quickly as possible as a priority.
I want to ask, clearly, you know, this council has been having a lot of conversation around the Department of Education and the impacts that budget cuts have had. And when we look at vacancies in the department, I remember during the preliminary budget hearing, this was a question that was asked about vacancy and reductions, the headcount reductions at the department. What is the likely impact of the vacancy rates at the Department of Education on, you know, on our children's education, on programs like universal pre-K, for example?
We haven't heard any reports of vacancies impacting the rollout of the pre-K program. We're working very closely with DOE. You know, we share the priority of early childhood education. You know, if and when we hear that there are impacts on children receiving the education, we're going to partner with them to try to address those.
Yeah. I recognize that this is probably, you know, a bigger conversation. But, you know, that is not what we're hearing from our communities, right? We're hearing about the impacts of accessing teachers and not having the type of services that are needed, especially when you think about special education and the type of interventions that are needed. So I just wanted to state that and put that squarely here, that there is a lot of concern and the councilmembers have expressed in different settings, our concern about vacancy rates in the Department of Education.
You know, I thank you for sharing that with us. And to the extent that there's specific things that are going on that you can share with the administration, with DOE, you know, we always want to work with the council to try to address issues, especially if they haven't bubbled up.
Great. And then, I guess, a question I have for DCAST is, have you all considered, you know, the remote option? What are the conversations around that, a citywide remote option? Certainly, some of this work can happen remotely. It's one of the things that this pandemic has taught many people. And it would make the city more competitive considering the vacancy rates that we are faced with.
Thank you. The mayor has been very clear in his position that in-person work allows for greater cross-pollination, greater idea sharing amongst employees. And the city is leading by example while we're encouraging the private sector to follow suit. I would also like to note that the majority of the city's workforce never worked remotely during the pandemic or now. And they are the employees that kept our city running. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you. And we certainly do appreciate them. As a Chair of Labor, I can tell you that. As a Chair of Labor, I can tell you that we know that many frontline workers that don't have the ability to work remote, right, because those industries require for them to be out in the field, were not able to be remote, but there's certainly a growing portion of the city workforce that can be remote, and the request is to let's look at it, let's have that conversation as we continue this conversation about what the future of work looks like in our city. I'm going to pass it back.
Okay. I mean, I am going to harp on this a little bit, because I understand, for instance, have you checked with other government agencies around the country? The Office of Personnel Management, federal, is a hybrid model, just as I give you an example, and I would, I understand the mayor's position, he and I and his staff have had this conversation, but I am nervous about not recruiting the kind of talent you want, at least to see in the next couple of years if we can have some kind of hybrid. But I also understand from Hellgate, an online publication, that the city denied requests for reasonable accommodations to work from home from immunocommodized employees suffering from cancer. Is that something that is a position that the city has, or is it local to the agency? It seems to be that remote work for people who are ill should be an opportunity.
Thank you for that question, and while I can't speak to that particular case, I'm happy to explain the process for requesting reasonable accommodation. Reasonable accommodation is a process for employees and employers to work together so that an employee is better able to fulfill their role at work, and that decision is made between the agency and specifically the agency's EEO officer and the requesting employee. So all agency EEO officers receive training from the DCAST Citywide Equity and Inclusion Office, so that all EEO officers are working from the same knowledge base when they are making these decisions, and each reasonable accommodation is handled on a case-by-case basis, so there is no blanket policy regarding reasonable accommodation for, you know, certain illnesses or anything else. It should also be noted that reasonable accommodation can be other than telework, so it can be, you know, equipment in order to do your job better, or a standing desk, or flexible work hours, so it isn't necessarily a work from home.
Okay, that was not a good story, however, in the paper. I know we've talked about, as the State Controller did in his 2022 report, about trying to do the hard recruit titles, and believe it or not, attorneys are on that now, architects are on that, auditors are on that, accountants, IT, and are you, again, I keep asking, but are there any other ways that you're trying to recruit these professionals? They are not coming to work for the City of New York. Are there any other ideas that you might have? I want the flexibility. I would suggest you have to work on the salary issues. I think you have to figure out how to have, you know, I know you're not, you're trying to be more flexible on the two-for-one policy. Are there other ways that you might be able to attract? I believe the headcount, even at the Department of Law, Law Department is way down, because lawyers do not want to work for the City of New York. Any other ideas?
So I would like to speak to the hard-to-recruit issue that you raised, that yes, there are many titles, there are almost 200 job titles within the City of New York that are designated as hard-to-recruit, and what that means is that the city, the five boroughs, within the five boroughs of the city, it's not always accessible for agencies to find an available workforce, so they are able to recruit outside of the five boroughs. And as we all know, the residency requirement is bound in the administrative code, so this hard-to-recruit designation waives that, so that agencies are able to recruit outside of the five boroughs, and in order to do that, if an agency is having, you know, just because a title wasn't hard-to-recruit maybe five years ago, doesn't mean that today that poll hasn't dried up. So an agency will approach DCAST and let us know that they're having difficulties with recruitment, and then we will make that decision as to whether or not their particular job should be included in that hard-to-recruit list.
Do you have any evaluation analysis of, in the last year or so, if these tactics that you are implementing outside of the boroughs, et cetera, are having any effect? Are we able to have more hard-to-fill titles filled because of some of these tactics?
I believe that that data would be contained at the agency level. DCAST wouldn't be privy to the information of whether or not those particular employees were part of the hard-to-recruit or residency waiver.
Does OMB know the answer to that, or that would be somebody else? Somebody must know.
Yeah, we don't, I certainly don't have with me, but I don't think OMB has statistics on how the hard-to-recruit has, you know, once a title's designated hard-to-recruit, how that's changed the number of folks that are hired.
We may follow up on that. I know you talked about the two-for-one policy. It sounds to me like you're being very flexible with it. Can you be more specific, whether, you know, how, where is it in effect or not, et cetera?
With regards to the two-for-one, we implemented that back in July of 2020, still in effect today. We have made a large number of exemptions, and I think, you know, the first thing to start with is that if you look at the headcount, a 1231 of 21, you know, at the beginning in this administration until today, the headcount is down, but very slightly. It's down a couple thousand on a base of 300,000. So we are, everyone knows we're facing attrition. We are, and DCAST's good efforts, and we are, in fact, hiring a lot of people, you know, but finding this market is difficult in terms of the two-for-one. We've exempted all of the uniformed forces themselves, EMS, just the big ones, all of the inspectors, all grant-funded positions. We've done at DOB, not only all the inspectors, but the plan examiners, the road-to-recovery development folks, the sidewalk shed people, the OTA folks. We've, at DOC, we've granted them a six-month full exemption as the whole agency, because we know they're going through significant structurings. You know, at FDNY, because I knew you mentioned that a couple times, the Bureau of Fire Prevention is completely exempt, so, you know, at HPD, development, DTR, the Enforcement Neighborhood Services, the Emergency Housing Voucher areas are all exempt. So we have made exemptions on these, you know, full titles or high titles within agency, but we also make exemptions when agencies have a particular need, you know, they come and they make, you know, they submit documents making a case why their particular need, you know, to go beyond the two-for-one, and we've been granting those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I guess I would suggest.
Sorry for the long answer.
At this point, I would just get rid of it altogether to try to get, you know, people hired. Suggestion.
I think what we found, you know, and I'm sure, you know, you could, there'd be debate about this, but a lot of the titles where people are, you know, showing that there's real problems getting those folks and there's shortages in those titles, those are the ones we've exempted.
I know, but they have to call you, then they have to wait for you to answer, et cetera.
These titles are fully exempt, so they're.
I know, but when they want to get a new title exempted, they have to call you, then they have to wait for an answer.
It is true, but.
I'm just giving you a suggestion that will cut time.
No, I take that under advisement. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. One suggestion. One other suggestion, and we talked a little bit about the bottom of the pay range, are there any other strategies to better compete with private sector salaries that, you know, OLR might have?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. So, you know, obviously, as you're aware, salaries have to be bargained with the unions representing those employees, you know, as I mentioned previously, as, you know, when we move towards a new round of negotiations, we certainly want to focus on doing what we can to emphasize recruitment and retention. You know, we have in the past tried to work with our unions during bargaining to address particular areas of concern, and so, you know, that's something we will continue to do.
Okay. The other, I mean, I know we talked about the 15 to 30 days for OMB, but just generally, how long does it take to fill a vacant position in city government? And obviously, it varies, I understand that, but is there some average that you could give? Obviously, you have to post it, I've done that many times, and then you have to select the candidate, and, you know, then you have to go through OMB, and then you also have to go through the mayor's office. So what's the general timeframe?
I don't, I don't think I have an exact timeframe or an average overall, but I can speak to the process that, yes, an agency will post, unless, of course, there is a civil service list that's available, and an agency may just call a hiring pool from that list in order to very quickly fill those positions. But if an agency does post, they'll post the position, they will collect the resumes, you know, call people in for interviews, and at that point, make a selection and request the official hire.
Okay.
But I can get you that information.
That would be helpful. I mean, I know you talked earlier about the OMB, the 15 to 30 days. Would it be possible to speed the process by auditing random samplings of hires and promotions so they don't all have to go through OMB?
So OMB reviews the hires to make sure that they are compliant with the two-for-one and that the agency budgets are sufficient to be able to afford the hires. Random audit wouldn't really provide that level of review. We wouldn't know if an agency hired and they weren't in a random sample and they were over their budget, we wouldn't know that until they started overspending their budget on the actuals. So while, you know, we really do welcome the opportunity to try to, you know, speed up the process in general, speed up our part of the process, I don't think switching to that kind of a system would allow for the required oversight in terms of the spending.
Maybe you need more staff to be able to do it. Shh, I just have to have jokes every once in a while, but I do like OMB, just so you know.
All right. I have some questions about the civil service exam. DCAST has reported experiencing difficulties in administering in-person exams, civil service exams, which obviously further complicate the hiring efforts. Were you successful in resuming in-person exams, and what is the plan that DCAST has made to increase testing and to prioritize titles with depleted lists of candidates?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, so although we were closed for in-person testing during the majority of the pandemic, during that time, DCAST did administer 183 examinations online for candidates to be able to apply for and take. That being said, we have a very aggressive schedule for this fiscal year, fiscal year '23. We are administering, I believe the count is 220 exams this year, again, in order to make sure that we are filling those gaps and ensuring that agencies have a continuous flow of job seekers for their jobs.
And so my next question is around, the Citizens Budget Commission reported that the city had been significantly delayed in releasing the results of the civil service exams. For instance, in the first four months of fiscal year 2022, the median time between exam administration and the results was 246 days. What steps is DCAST taking to provide the results for civil service exams in a more timely manner, and has DCAST sought to leverage technology and other process reforms to expedite this process? I know in your testimony, you spoke a little bit about the Bridge program. If you could amplify on that and what other strategies to get this done faster.
Certainly. So DCAST does have a, that number that we do need to report out regarding the number of days that it takes between taking the exam and establishing the list, and that number should be below 290. So as you stated, we are below that number. However, we've, that number's been as low as 75 days on average, so, and the largest common denominator is what type of exams we are given. Giving, some of our exams are, you know, you can take it online, it's a very quick, simple process, and the turnaround for those exams can be as low as 50 days. Some exams have multiple parts, there might be a multiple choice test, there may be a physical test, or a typing test, or something like that, that is administered afterwards, and that all takes time, because those events happen in person and they're scheduled accordingly. So that will lengthen the time that it will take to, for somebody to get their test results.
What about the Bridge program that you all have started to implement?
We are so proud of the Bridge, because this is a very clear departure from the way that we have always administered exams. We always give one exam for one job, and that's it. And so this is a really wonderful way to streamline our resources, so to give one exam for up to 10 jobs, but it's also a great way for job seekers to streamline their ability to apply for and qualify for many more jobs through one action. And again, that exam is automated, so it will take place, it's a multiple choice exam that we're going to give at the end of this month to the 4,000 people who applied, and we are hoping that that will have a very quick turnaround as well for those job seekers. And just also to note, I think it's kind of implied in what I'm saying, but just to be very clear, that the more automated steps that we have in our examination process, the faster that turnaround time will be.
Okay, last question from me, and then we're going to go to colleagues. I know that, I believe, half of the full-time workforce is under expired contracts, and then others are to expire by the end of FY '23. We've obviously had many conversations this morning about what could improve the workforce of the City of New York. So I'm wondering, are there some ideas that you are going to put into those negotiations that might help that, and are there, are there ways that the city can recruit and rapidly hire new employees, thinking about terms that could assist in that? I know you're dealing with managed care, I'm quite familiar with that issue, but aside from that, are there some ways that you can use the contracts to improve the workforce? And I want to congratulate Councilmember Bernikoff for being here, too. I just want to say thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, you know, as I mentioned, and you're correct, approximately half of our contracts are expired. You know, as we move to renegotiate those contracts, you know, in all the bargaining we do, we always think about areas where we can improve recruitment and retention and try to work with unions in those areas, and we'll certainly take every opportunity to do so in any upcoming negotiations. You know, I wouldn't want to speak to specific proposals we may make in the context of collective bargaining negotiations, but we are discussing how we can focus on those issues.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call on Councilmember Velasquez, Holden, Joseph, and then I'll go after, from that list. Councilmember Velasquez.
Hi, good afternoon. So just wanted to follow up on, with DCAST, on the testing. How long between when a test is given, does it take to be certified, and then the agencies can hire off of it?
Good afternoon. So currently, the average number of days after an exam is administered to when the list is certified right now is 240 days. As I stated earlier, that number has been as low as 75 days on average. It depends upon a lot of factors, such as the type of exam that we're giving, how much automation is involved. The other component here is that we are, you know, finally establishing lists for exams that we had given either right before March of 2020 or during March of 2020 that were, and those exams were protracted as well, because we were not in the office in order to do that work. And so I think that we're coming out of seeing that cycle, and like I said, last month, we established a list within 50 days.
And how often do you put out new tests for titles?
So we have an annual exam schedule, and there are exams that are given monthly, sometimes multiple times per year, so any given month, we can have 30, 40 exams that are open and available for job seekers.
Is there a reason why some titles don't have tests out, even if the previous list for that title has been exhausted?
There could be several reasons. One reason could be that, you know, it's a title that's used by either one or just a few agencies, and those agencies have indicated that they don't have any vacancies at this time, so we would put that to the lower end of the priority list. Another reason would be that we have to give a large-scale exam. For example, this year, we administered sanitation worker, and we'll be giving that exam to 65,000 people, starting today, actually. So, and then that, you know, that sort of takes up our resources, because we have the same number of testing professionals regardless of what type of test we're giving. But if there is an exam, and it is problematic that the list is expired and the agency needs another list, we will work very quickly in order to time that next exam to when agencies can, need to do that hiring. can, need to do that hiring.
Is part of the hiring challenges for the city that is, is it that the city's not putting out the tests fast enough, or is certification the problem?
I mean, there are definitely different reasons why an exam would take longer or take a short amount of time. And again, luckily, we can be flexible in that we can very quickly get ready to administer an exam if it's necessary, or very quickly get that list of passers or test takers to an agency if they need to hire. Or, you know, if an agency is not hiring, then that list would not be moving forward because there are no vacancies to fill.
And then, this is for OMB. Are you reviewing how staffing shortages affect agency metrics, and are any of those possibly affecting critical health and safety issues for New Yorkers?
We have not seen a meaningful change in the output of city services. We would obviously look to prioritize if there was a problem, especially if it impacted life and safety issues. We've given exemptions for most of the life and safety titles, but, you know, to the extent that we could otherwise expedite the hiring or filling of vacancies in those jobs, we would definitely do that.
What is the attrition rate for, overall, for our agencies here in the city?
I don't have the number, I don't have the attrition rate. But we can get, we can get that for you, I'm sorry.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Just, just in. So, the overall attrition rate is 8.3%? Sorry, I was looking at vacancy rates. I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong number. Never mind, we'll have to get back to my, on attrition rate. It seemed high.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holden, and then Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Chairs. Thank you all for your testimony. I have a few questions on maintaining our workforce, and this has to be included in it. How many city workers did the city lose due to non-compliance with COVID-19 vaccine mandates?
Ladies and gentlemen, quiet down, please. Ladies and gentlemen, quiet down, please. Quiet down, please, ladies and gentlemen. Folks, instead of clapping, if we can just do this, all right?
Did, did, did you hear the question? All right. Anyone who has information on that? Because I want to know how many were fired, how many were placed on leave without pay, how many resigned, how many resigned or retired as a result of non-compliance? Do you have those numbers? Because that affects the numbers, why we haven't filled positions. When, by the way, the CDC states that COVID-19 no longer presents a high risk of severe disease, hospitalization, and death, so...
Quiet, please, quiet, please, so we can get the answer, quiet.
Please pause my time for the, you know, that little pause there. Can you, anybody give us a kind of a breakdown?
So we don't, I'm sorry, we don't have that with us today, but we can certainly circle back.
Yeah, but, okay, can you get, can you get us that? Because that's important.
Absolutely.
That's important for a hearing on workforce and vacancies. That's an important question. Because, by the way, have you had discussions with the mayor's office on lifting the mandates because of, obviously, the CDC has changed their guidelines? You know, has the city discussed that?
So, the vaccine mandate is still in effect within the City of New York.
No, but the question is, have you, things changed?
If that were to change, we would issue a policy.
We're not, we're not in 2020, we're not in 2021. We've gone through, the city should get back to normal, I think, that's my personal opinion. And the city should lift everything because the CDC says, if everybody reads it here, and the mayor's office, we've discussed it with them, but since your offices are very, very important to this, are you discussing it? Has any discussion been made with the administration, within the administration about this, about lifting the mandates? Because things have changed.
If there were to be discussions, our agencies would be involved in part of those discussions.
You wouldn't?
We would.
You would be? Okay. So if you would, so you haven't had discussions?
We have had discussions regarding the current vaccine mandate, which is still in effect, yes.
So, but you're not, you had no discussions about lifting? I don't want to get into semantics, but no, the way I read it, there's no discussions of lifting a mandate, even though the CDC changed their view on things, and, by the way, the vaccine. So if we're going to, if we're going to discuss shortfalls in manpower, staffing levels, whatever you want to call it, we need to discuss getting people's lives back in shape and stop affecting peoples and their families, residents and their families and workers unnecessarily. And my, you know, that's what I would, I would charge you with, as a matter of compassion, let's put it that way. If we, if we care about people, we should care about all people. And by the way, just talking to city workers who have been suspended for a year or more or have been fired, they have medical, their doctors are saying maybe they shouldn't get the vaccine, maybe that it could hurt them. And I've had three, by the way, I had the vaccine and I had a booster. I went to three doctors already complaining about certain things, and they all kind of say, "Well, it could be the vaccine possibly, that's, we don't know enough." You know, so there are situations, there are situations that we don't know yet, but at least give the benefit of the doubt to workers who have served this city well, who were here in 2020, who were on the front lines, who did, you know, a lifetime of work, many of them, and were either forced to retire or forced, or fired. So we're at a point, I think the administration has to step forward, I think they will eventually, but I think it takes some, you know, we have to really, you know, beg them at this point, but there's, people's lives are affected, and families, and some people invested 20 years in agencies, did their jobs on the front lines, and this is how they're rewarded? I just don't, in fact, I would like the answers on the breakdown because that's very, very important, that we get that information. Thank you, Chair.
We will follow up, thank you very much. Councilmember Joseph, and then Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Chairs, thank you. My question to you is, what are you doing to retain employees? One, salaries are usually very low, promotions and raises are very slow and hard to get. So what is the plan for that? And as my colleague said, we're in a short area of where we have, we don't have enough staff for the citywide, that includes our fire department, that includes my fellow teachers. So, and I would love some answers as to how we answer that and remedy those, the labor shortage, especially in those areas.
Certainly, thank you for your question. So, a very important aspect of employee retention is employee and professional development. And through DCAST, agencies and employees can receive all types of professional development training, licensure courses, training in soft skills, managerial training. We have quite a robust portfolio, and again, we believe that the city should invest in its employees through these development opportunities. I'm sorry, what was the second part? I apologize.
How do you maintain workforce with, New York City's very expensive. The last time I checked, rent is expensive, food is expensive, raising children here is expensive. So how do you match that? When I come and work for you making $30,000, $40,000, I can't support a family on that salary. How do you match that versus me going to private sector?
So, I can't speak to salary, I'm going to turn that over to my colleague from OLR.
OMB, yay!
Oh, OLR.
I'll take that, Councilmember. So, you know, obviously, as I mentioned before, you know, we engage in collective bargaining with our unions, and, you know, as the Councilmember Brewer mentioned, we do have some expired contracts. We look forward to, you know, being able to hopefully get back to bargaining those contracts. And, you know, we, our goal with every collective bargaining agreement is to ensure that their increases are fair to the workers while also reasonable for the taxpayers. In addition, obviously, we provide benefits, which I think, you know, are excellent benefits, health benefits, pension, and we work very hard and we work with our labor partners to make sure those benefits can be maintained.
In the next negotiations, make sure we, as my colleague said, we revisit the mandate as well.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Ariola, and then Palladino.
Thank you, Chairs. I just want to go back to some points that my colleague Bob Holden had mentioned. Right now, employees that are off payroll are counted as a vacancy as per your testimony. And that means that anyone that is on leave without pay or LWAP, or was unnecessarily terminated, have an immediate impact on vacancies in the City of New York's workforce. So my first question is, what is the DCAST timeline or reasonable accommodation request timeline for a reasonable accommodation request? Specifically, how long does an agency have to respond to an initial request, to an appeal or a decision? And ultimately, how long does the agency have to make a final decision?
Thank you for your question. As I explained earlier, reasonable accommodations are handled on a case-by-case basis at the employing agency. DCAST does, DCAST does not review all reasonable accommodations that's done at the agency level. We certainly advocate and encourage for an expeditious resolution of a reasonable accommodation request, although I'm not aware of any timelines or deadlines for completing them. However, if there are, I will, I will certainly circle back to you.
But there were deadlines beforehand, and in November and October, when many of the employees went on LWAP, there were two-month deadlines, three-month deadlines, but then in December of 2021, the deadline, DCAST removed a deadline that held all agencies accountable to a deadline to let people know what the determination was. And how fair is that, to allow people to go months and months and months without pay, without knowing what they can have, what kind of work they can do, with an inability to get another job because they're on leave without pay? It's absolutely impacting people's lives. They're losing their homes, they're losing their families, their children are at risk, and yet the City of New York is taking their time in giving them any type of decision or a timeline for it. It's absolutely unconscionable that you would treat a workforce that put themselves out there during the COVID vaccine, the height of the pandemic, when there was no vaccine available to them, and yet put their lives on the line while others were dying. It's just not fair. They should be able to know what the timeline is, what the determination is, and why two out of three who have put in for a reasonable accommodation for the same issue are being denied and one is being granted. So, how are we fixing this?
So, again, as I explained, this is a process that's contained at the agency, the employee agency, and each case is reviewed on a case-by-case basis with the EEO officer. Regarding timelines and deadlines, again, I'm not familiar with any, but I certainly will circle back with you with that information.
No, but what you're not getting is that DCAST oversees all of this. So who's setting these timelines, or who's telling the agencies? Who's giving them the information to say? You're saying it's held within the agencies themselves, but DCAST is the oversight, let's face it. And why are there different guidelines for different agencies? And why aren't these guidelines available to the public when they go and look for them? So why is, why is the City of New York operating in a silo and making people's lives, be it or livelihoods, are at risk? It's unfair, and that's the major point, is that it's unfair. Even when promotional exams are coming up, people who are on leave without pay are not eligible to take those exams. So they're not even allowed to, you know, promote themselves. And so it's really, what's happening is, we're holding them hostage by a mandate that is now debunked by the very CDC that said it was necessary. Because the CDC, the guidelines have changed, and they said that now a person who has had COVID and a person who has had the vaccine have the same amount of immunity, or as much immunity as you can have, to someone who was not vaccinated. And again, like my councilmember, my colleague stated, I'm double vaccinated and boosted. So, but, but people who have, need to know, it's unfair that they're living in limbo, and that's where we are failing them as councilmembers and as the City of New York.
Thank you. Shh. Councilmember Palladino, and then Councilmember Dinowitz.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I want to welcome everybody who's here in the gallery. I want to thank the committee behind me, both committees. I want to thank you for your testimonies. But I, too, like my other two colleagues, have something to say. I've sat here for an hour and a half, and I've listened to a lot of, we're in crisis mode with hiring. We've had a lot of problems getting people to get back to work. So my question is, and it's not my only question, so I'm not stopping there, why do you think you're having a problem hiring? Why do you think that problem is? Do you think it's because the contracts aren't worth the paper they're written on? Do you think it's because people here, in this room, outside this gallery, in every outer borough, blue collar, all races, colors, creeds have been laid off? Let me ask you this also, in 2020, did we have this problem? So I think we could kind of double back and actually look at today, and we could look at what transpired after 2020. Now, you've got a room full of workers here, they want to go back to work. The CDC changed their guidelines. You want your work shortage to end? Why don't you rehire who has been let go? Because while you're all sitting here talking, and you're all worried about all this other sort of stuff, how we're going to get new hires, job seekers, key words, job seekers, new language. No, we've got people here, we've got people in the outer boroughs and in the borough of Manhattan who want to go back to work. Guess what? Your job shortage wouldn't be. We would not have a job shortage if we put people back to work. These are qualified. Now you want to bring in new hires. Who do you think trains those new hires, if you're a fireman, if you're a police officer? Those that have been on the job for 20 years. Why do you think our economy is failing? Another question I'll ask, but I'll answer that for you, too. Our economy is failing because people are leaving this city in droves, in droves. Why is that? Because they can no longer work here in the City of New York. They grew up saying, "I want to be a fireman, I want to be a teacher, I want to be a police officer." And this is how we thank them. The CDC, and this is my final statement, the CDC has changed their, we followed the science, right? Everybody did what they were supposed to do. Well, guess what? You won't have a job shortage if you follow the CDC guidelines. So enough with all this malarkey about how we're going to change things, put these people back to work. You're going to see what's going to happen. You'll have experienced people on the job, you'll have people who could train your new job seekers, and you will have what this city needs to put it back to normal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next, our next Councilmember, Krishnan, and then Dinowitz.
One other thing, I just, to reiterate what Bob said, I'm sorry, to reiterate what Bob said, conversation with the mayor is crucial, and the mayor, I think, realizes exactly what's going on now, and we have opened the doors to conversation. Nobody wants these problems, nobody does. We just want people back to work. Most important of all, we want the City of New York back to the way it was pre-COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Quiet, please. Councilmember Christiane, and then Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you so much, Chairs Brewer and De La Rosa. My question, I just have one question. And it's clear the city vacancy rate, I think, is five times or seven times higher now than what it was before the pandemic. And there are a lot of reasons that are of concern, including the report that Chair Brewer mentioned from Helgate about the denial of reasonable accommodation requests. So there are a lot of reasons that are very concerning about the pay disparities as well that are contributing factors to the vacancy rate being so high. But the one I'd like to, the one issue I want to focus on and ask my question about particularly is the administration's resistance to a hybrid work policy. As far as I am concerned, I think our city should be a leader on these issues for working parents. And I say it as a parent of young children myself. But especially for young, new mothers in the workforce, because these issues of lack of hybrid policies have a huge inequitable effect on gender and particularly affect women and mothers in the workplace. It affects those who have to care for their relatives too. And other situations where hybrid arrangements, no doubt, increase worker productivity and contribute for a far more equitable workplace. These are policies that in the private sector exist throughout. And I'm wondering why the city has not set a model for the rest of the workforce by not only catching up to more flexible workplace policies, but really setting the standard for what they should be.
Thank you. So as the mayor has repeatedly said, that in-person work is a position that allows for greater idea sharing, greater cross-pollination amongst employees. And the city is leading by example in this area while encouraging the private sector to follow suit.
Thank you. I would just want to put on the record that I think the way the city leads by example is by either staying pace with or exceeding other sectors of the workforce. And if other sectors of the workforce have flexible policies and it's documented the effects of flexible work policies on work productivity, and particularly in gender and worker equity, I think this is an area where the city should be leading, and it's currently not. Thank you.
Thank you, next Councilmember Dinowitz, and then Vernikov, and then Caban, and then Nurse.
Thank you. Just kind of two questions. One is, do you have a breakdown of the vacancies and the different qualifications they need? For example, X number of people require a high school diploma. Why need a college degree, a bachelor's degree, et cetera?
Thank you, free question. DCAST does not have a breakdown of every vacancy across the city. However, we could, you know, by agency by agency, we could circle back and certainly get you that information. Every city title has a set of its unique qualification requirements, but we can certainly bucket.
Well, thank you. I look forward to that information. I'm interested because there are these vacancies. And I'm sure a number of them are with people who only have, who only require a high school diploma or an equivalent. And it sounds like you're struggling with recruitment and even ideas for recruitment. And I've worked in school for 14 years, high school. Never seen a city agency come in. I've never seen any city agency come in to try to recruit high schoolers who meet all the qualifications to graduate. But for them, maybe college is not their path, but deserve, you know, a good, quality, middle-class job. And so if you're working with other agencies, I would imagine you'd want to work with the biggest city agency. Are there any efforts to do that sort of work in your recruitment efforts?
Certainly. And we do actually share our examination schedule with high school students every year in the event that they are interested in city government, because we agree that our high school students within our five boroughs are a great pool of talent that the city would love to have join its ranks.
So let me ask kind of a simple question. Why should I work for the city? I don't want to applaud, but a serious question, you know? Why should I work for the city?
So I'm smiling because as a 20-plus-year veteran of city government, I can certainly speak to why I work for city government. And that is because no other job, nowhere else, do you have the ability to go to work every day and know that the things that you do directly impact 8 million New Yorkers. And that is really exciting and really important work. So the city is looking for like-minded folks who want to make an impact and who want to make a direct impact in their own communities. Because that is something that government work provides as opposed to any other type of work. Not that I'm disparaging other types of work.
All right. I would say handing someone a piece of paper and saying, "Here's the exam schedule," is a lot different than the very passionate speech you just gave. And I would highlight that as something that's very important when doing, yeah, good job. Doing job recruitment. I would also add, as has been mentioned before, paying people what they should be paid. And just one other thing, that this 246 days, a median to receive results, you know, even if I loved, you know, if someone loves New York City so much that they want to really impact people's lives, they can't wait almost a year to find out if they've got a job or not. And in the meantime, they've probably found a job that pays a little more. And so it's a little surprising, again, having done multiple-choice tests for many years of my life, that it takes so long, even the minimum amount you mentioned, I forget what it was, but it was still a high number, that we don't have the ability to provide, you know, test results and things of that nature in a more timely fashion. I'll leave that one there, and I have one other question. Councilmember De La Rosa, she asked about overtime and the cost of overtime versus just hiring more people. I'm kind of interested in the cost to our, you know, buildings and businesses. We've spoken about the human cost, but have you calculated, for example, buildings have to leave up scaffolding if a DOB inspector comes back and says your facade work is not good enough, doesn't meet the qualifications to remove the scaffolding, you have to do more work? You know, a business whose gas has been turned off is waiting for a city inspector. Have you calculated or considered how much lower staffing impacts or costs? Not the City of New York, not our tax dollars, not... But impacts how much the businesses have to spend on losing business because they can't get the gas back on? Or how much the buildings have to spend to keep that scaffolding up another month?
I would not have that information. I don't know if my colleagues would have any information to speak to that.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything to calculate. But, you know, obviously, we are aware that when service delivery is slow, it has impacts on New Yorkers. And we do everything we can to avoid that.
And you have no metric of, with X number of employees, you know, DOB can respond to do an inspection in however many days, but with the current number of employees you have, it takes longer? Do you have any sort of metric that really measures how much longer it's taking to deliver those services? And then perhaps from that, anyone can extrapolate how much it's going to cost a building or a business as they're losing that money?
Yeah, I do not have that. I do not have that.
You should. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I mean, I think that's an excellent question, some metrics to look at. And maybe we can try to do it ourselves, because the list is long. Councilmember Veronica, Caban, and Nurse, go ahead.
Thank you.
No, wait, no, you're next. She's next, you're next, Veronica, and then Caban.
Thank you, committee chairs, and thank you for your testimony. And also, I'd like to thank the incredible city workers, our teachers, police officers, and firefighters who are here today. And I want to just tell you that I am sorry for the predicament that you're in today. My questions are surrounding the vaccine mandates. My first question is, how many New York City police officers who applied for the vaccine mandate exemption since the mandate came into effect?
Thank you for your question. I don't have that information.
How about teachers?
Same answer.
And firefighters?
DCAST does not have that information.
Who has that information?
We can circle back and get that information for you.
Do you know how many teachers received an exemption from the vaccine mandate?
No.
And how many police officers?
So again, as I stated, DCAST would not have this information. But we can certainly circle back and talk to other agencies to see where we are.
Okay, but who has that information?
I'm not, I'm not clear. It sounds like it might come from several different agencies. So again, happy to circle back and get you that information.
Do you know how many city workers were denied the exemption?
I can get you that information.
Would you agree that our city has a shortage of police officers?
I'm not aware that there is a shortage of police officers. However, you know, I think that that's a question best answered by the Police Department.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I believe that that's a question that is best answered by the Police Department.
Okay. So you don't believe there's a shortage of police officers in our city? Is that correct?
That's not what I said. What I said was, I'm not aware of a shortage of police officers.
Okay. And how about teachers? Do you believe there is a shortage of teachers in our city?
So DCAST is not aware of a shortage of staff at the Department of Education. That question would best be answered by the Department of Education.
Okay. And how about firefighters?
DCAST would not be knowledgeable about the state of the staffing at the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. Does DCAST conduct exit interviews for city workers?
Yes, DCAST conducts exit interviews for departing managers.
Okay. And when they're asked questions about why they're quitting or if there's a, is there an indication for vaccine mandate as the reason for city workers quitting?
So as a part of that survey, there isn't a specific question to a vaccination mandate. However, we can, I mean, there are questions where an employee could indicate that. So I think that that information could be gathered.
Okay, so you can gather from the questions?
Correct.
If somebody's leaving because of a vaccine, because they didn't want to vaccinate, correct?
If they self-reported that, yes.
Okay. Do you know how many police officers quit because of the mandate?
I would not have that information of why anyone would leave city service on their own accord.
But you say you can get that information from the interview, from the exit interview, correct?
I could get that information from the exit interview for city managers, yes.
Okay, so do you have that information now, or?
Police officers are not city managers.
Okay.
But again, I mean, I can't speak for the agency. The agency may collect that information upon departure.
Understood. Do you believe our city is safer if we terminate firefighters? Because of the vaccine, because they're not getting vaccinated?
DCAST does not have a position on terminations of city employees.
Okay, and how about police officers? Do you believe that if we terminate police officers because they're not vaccinated, that our city is safer?
Again, DCAST does not have an opinion on whether or not, on any of those questions.
Could you describe the process of reviewing the exemptions for the vaccine?
Are you referring to the, are you referring to the requests for a waiver? Or a reasonable accommodation?
Yes.
Sorry, a waiver.
If you can describe both.
Certainly. So an employee would report to their agency, to whichever agency they work for, that they are seeking a reasonable accommodation for either a medical reason or a religious reason. And they would have that discussion with their EEO officer. And then at that point, they would have a dialogue with their EEO officer, and the agency would make the decision of whether to grant the reasonable accommodation or to determine what type of reasonable accommodation the employee should have.
Okay, and how long does that process take, from the inception till the final decision?
I know that agencies seek to make a decision and have these conversations finalized as expeditiously as possible. There are no timeframes or guidelines, I'm sorry, for other than as quickly as possible.
And do you know how many exemptions you're currently reviewing?
DCAST does not review reasonable accommodations for any employees that are not DCAST employees.
And EOC appeals were supposed to be answered last November. Many employees are still waiting appeals decisions 10 months after applying for their reasonable accommodations. Why is DCAST's EOC appeals panel delaying the terminations, especially in light of the current CDC guidelines?
I would have to circle back with you, and I'm not familiar with this panel.
Councilmember, when you're done, wrap up when you can.
Could you?
Yeah, I can say the panel that handles appeals of those determinations is processing those determinations as quickly as they can. They've gotten many appeals, and they are working diligently to do so.
Could you comment on the rationale for not paying workers while they're waiting on their exemptions and appeals?
No, I can't comment.
Well, what's the reason for them not getting paid while they're waiting?
That's, that is not under DCAST's jurisdiction.
Oh, is jurisdiction?
I can't comment on that.
I'm sorry?
I can clarify that workers who submitted reasonable accommodation requests when the mandate was first put into place were kept on payroll while those accommodation requests were pending. So, you know, if you, when the mandate was put into place, there were certain dates by which you had to request an accommodation. If you did so, then you were kept on payroll, working while awaiting your determination.
Are you almost wrapped up?
Yeah, just one last question.
Okay.
Could you just explain why we still need a vaccine exemptions if the CDC changed their guidelines to say that getting the vaccine is essentially the same as getting COVID?
So the city's vaccine mandate is still in effect. And so the agencies are following that mandate.
Thank you.
Very much. Councilmember Caban, then Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Chairs. Good afternoon. So my questions relate to the remote hybrid work issue. But I want to start with a little bit of information released by the Abilities Research Center at Mount Sinai. Specifically, that the CDC estimates that 7.5% of the current adult US population is now suffering with long COVID. In just the last 12 months, the number of patients has doubled to 150 million adults and 13 million children worldwide. And additionally, adding to the human cost, this brings a financial cost of $386 billion just to the US economy alone. And for folks who aren't aware, long COVID, basically, the science says that the virus can persist in the tissue where it continues to provoke your immune system. It could lead to blood clotting, to neuroinflammation, to neuropathy, to chronic fatigue, a number of other issues. You combine, you combine that with the fact that, you know, historically, our workplaces have not been workplaces that do right by or provide equitable conditions and accommodations for folks who live with disabilities. And also the reporting that was mentioned by my colleagues, done by Helgate, which is incredibly concerning. And so I want to go back to the mayor's position on, you know, refusing to implement a remote or hybrid work option, citing only and simply idea sharing and cross-pollination. My questions are, have things been considered, like in terms of, for idea sharing, cross-pollination, strategies that other workplaces use, such as virtual watercooler gatherings? Again, hybrid models that do provide that in-person interaction, but then also accommodate folks who want to keep themselves, know they're safe, or just simply it works better for their families? Is there data evidence and research that the mayor is relying on to make the statement that full in-work conditions, if they weren't in place, if we did remote or hybrid, would inhibit or diminish the ability to perform any particular work that needs to be done by any particular city employee? Have employees been surveyed on workplace preferences in terms of a hybrid and remote option? I will also add, in addition to my questions, that I don't really find the... questions, that I don't really find the reasoning that what we did in the past being a good enough reason for how we should strive to do things in the future. And, yeah, I mean, again, when we talk about the ability to fill these work positions, we're seeing it all across the private sector for sure. It is not diminishing productivity. The studies are showing that it is increasing productivity. I'm proud that my office institutes a hybrid model that allows our people to work from home some days and be in the office on others. So I'm eager to hear the answer to your question, to the questions that I posed.
Thank you for your questions. So as I had stated earlier, the mayor has repeated that in-person work is the work model that the city of New York will be following in order for idea sharing, collaboration, and discussion amongst its employees.
But specifically, is he relying on any data evidence or research to back up that position or statement?
So I'm not familiar with what information that the mayor is looking at, but I can certainly circle back with whatever studies and other informed information and provide that to you.
That would be great. Thank you. And my, one of the other questions I asked was, have employees been surveyed on their workplace preferences relating specifically to remote or hybrid work options?
So DCAS has not put out an employee survey regarding work schedules. That might be something that has happened at the agency level, because again, agencies speak directly to their employees. That's also a topic that has an impact upon labor and labor discussions. So I can turn that over to my colleague for further information.
I'm not aware of any of those surveys at the agency level either, although they certainly may have been heard.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, chairs. Good afternoon, everyone. My questions are pretty light, and on the lighter side of retention. I guess I was really curious, you know, we're asking people to come back to work, and a lot of retention is tied to the fact about how much time people have to spend in our workspaces. And I'm very curious if DCAS or any of you all here are aware of any effort or past initiative of the city to invest in understanding workplace psychology and how to create inviting, inspiring workspaces.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your question. So I think that DCAS and city agencies regularly look to ideas for how the workplace can be more welcoming, inviting, safe, and productive. So over the years, different topics have been discussed. We also have a unit that solely focuses on employee wellness, and that is called WorkWell NYC. And they provide agencies, and they have monthly discussions regarding these very topics, and how to keep employees engaged and healthy at the workplace. And I'm going to turn that over to my colleague.
Well, just specifically, I'm talking about the actual facilities. You know, you're sitting at these drab, outdated offices for eight hours a day. I mean, when was the last time the city invested in making a nice workspace for people that is competitive to what the private sector is offering?
So again, I can speak to what DCAS has done. In order to make the workplace more inviting, welcoming for employees, we just recently, just last week, opened a café on the mezzanine, and that is a shared workspace on the mezzanine of One Center Street. I invite you all to please come visit us there. It's a beautiful space where employees can, there are vending machines for fresh food options, there is a pantry and a kitchen for preparation of food, and there's also workspace discussion spaces that are set up for meetings or just informal discussion between employees, so that employees have a space to go during the workday that is bright and lively and an interesting space to share. And we're very proud of this space. So again, I would really love to invite all of you to please come visit us there.
Besides DCAS, is there any other information or investments that the city can speak to around this?
So I can't speak to facilities, except to say that, you know, if a labor representative brought concerns with certain facilities to OLR's attention, we would and have worked with agencies and with DCAS to try to address those issues and improve the workspaces. I can speak to WorkWell, which my colleague mentioned, and which is a program at the Office of Labor Relations that focuses on employee wellness across the city. It's a program we're very proud of and always trying to expand. We have ambassadors at agencies across the city who work to engage those agencies' employees on various wellness initiatives. We deliver programming, and that's something, initiative that was launched only about seven or eight years ago, and that we continue to push and expand, and that we're very proud of.
My last question is, has there been a comprehensive study across agencies with city workers to understand what they need and what they would like, and where they would like to see better investments, whether it's facilities, whether it's professional development? Something comprehensive, that's not just agency-by-agency siloed information, but what does it mean to work for the city of New York, and what's exciting about it, what's not exciting about it? Has there ever been a comprehensive study conducted, or are there any plans for something like that?
I'm not familiar with any comprehensive study. Again, I can only speak to what we have done at my agency at DCAS, and that's exactly what we have done. We've surveyed all of the staff, and one of the recurring topics that folks had shared was that they wanted a space within the workday to go to that is inviting, that isn't some corner or some conference room, where they can either take a break or have a discussion with a colleague away from their desks. And so that is something that DCAS put into place. But again, I'm not very familiar with what other agencies have done.
Thank you, chairs.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this. I think there'll be lots of follow-up requests based on individuals who have asked questions, and I hope that we can work together to fill 24,000 vacancies, because every single one of them is needed. For whatever reason, they're not, and we need to fill them. And thank you very much for your time and information. Next, we're going to go to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to public testimony. For in-person panelists, please come to the dais once your name has been called.
Please, please be quiet. Please be quiet. We're here. We're not going anywhere, and we're listening, and it is online. So shh.
For panelists who are attending--
Please be quiet.
For panelists who are attending virtually--
Please be quiet.
Be quiet, or you will be escorted out.
For panelists who are attending virtually, we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. We will be limiting public--
Shh.
We will be limiting public testimony to two minutes each. All hearing participants may submit written testimony of any length by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. The first panelists we'll hear from today are Alice Wong and Daryl L. Sims.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, chairs and committee members, as well as attendees to this hearing. My name is Daryl Sims. I'm president of New York City Managerial Employees Association, often called MEA. I am a recent retiree from New York City HPD. I spent 39 years with the agency, and the agency was basically my home. And when you spend that amount of time, you make it work for you in terms of making work fun. And I find today that it appears that work is not that way for the municipal workers, or they wouldn't be leaving the jobs. And, you know, there's a lot of issues that municipal workers have, which I agree with, that have come up many times. The most pressing issues, I believe, today is pay raises and the ability to telework, or some hybrid form of it. The pay raises, it appears that those are going to be stalled because of the healthcare situation, and no one really wants to give the employees the monies that they deserve. Also, we did a survey on the teleworking with members of our organization, which Ms. Wong is going to present. I also, we have in our package correspondence with the New York City, and as well as New York State Senate and Assembly advocating for different issues for managers. So I think that's very comprehensive, and I wish everyone would read it. But I'm going to let Alice take over, because she has some vital, important information on teleworking.
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Wong. I am the executive director for NYC MEA. Thank you for taking time to listen to us. MEA did ask to survey our members in regards to telework and its adoption as a future policy for New York City employees. The survey also included questions related to retention and job-related support systems. We also found that morale among city employees are low. We hear this from our members time and time again. The two drivers are pay raises and telework options. OLR mentioned union negotiations, but I would be remiss to not remind OLR that there are also non-union members who work for the city, specifically managers that deserve the same level of respect and attention. Some statistics I want to share with you is that 95% of our members support work-from-home options. 51% cited that commute and safety and health concerns are their top priorities. 70% of our managers have taken on additional work as colleagues leave the city. And then 474% find it harder to fill the open vacancies and believe that the lack of work-from-home is a main factor. And 90% of our managers strongly want a pay increase. Some of the top issues include IT technology and infrastructure upgrades that are needed to support work-from-home. Investment in IT equipment, including computers and headsets, are needed or needs to be updated. A stabilization policy for work-from-home for a city policy versus an agency policy is of concern, because work-from-home policy may not be applicable or available to be offered to everyone, thus it may not be a fair policy. The preference for a hybrid option for flexibility to collaborate with colleagues is important, and flexibility will also provide for improved work-life balance. More importantly, this flexibility of telework will provide the city to be more competitive in the job market, to be attractive for talent. Last but not least, mental health focus should be a top priority. We have these complete surveys available to the council, should you wish to see it. We look forward to continued development, working with the city and the council. Thank you for your time and attention.
I wanted to just make one little brief statement, that the retention of the existing workers are just as much as important as hiring new people. So I think that part of the issue is, is finding how to retain the existing workforce. Otherwise, you're going to hire people, and they're going to come out the bottom. So I think that it's a two-part issue, the retention of existing workers, as well as attracting new workers to the job.
Thank you both very much. We will look at your survey very carefully, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to welcome Orin Barzalay to speak, followed by Saul Fishman, Anna Chapani, and then Michael Caratzas. Orin Barzalay, you may begin upon the sergeant's announcement.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Committee Chair, and honorable members of the council. I am Orin Barzalay, president of FDNY EMS Local 2507, representing FDNY EMTs, paramedics, and fire inspectors. I am here at your invitation to testify about the major problems of FDNY EMS attrition, and how it absolutely impacts life safety in the city of New York, especially among the poor. I can probably sum it up with only a few words: poverty EMS wages, a difficult and stressful EMS job, antiquated, century-old EMS work sites, a lack of respect for EMS professionals. I could likely wrap up my testimony there, but let me explain a bit more. This city and FDNY has pushed its medical first responders' capabilities to a breaking point. Even as the FDNY is unable to keep up with the existing 911 medical emergency call volumes, we have been briefed by the agency that is seeking to reduce EMS staff and coverage by deleting 13 24-hour units across our city, at a time when EMS is short by hundreds of personnel. Don't believe it? There are fire department memos about their plan. You can just ask for them, and we can provide you copies as well. A total lack of investment in its workforce and our crappy workplace conditions certainly don't help. EMS staff attrition rate is an abysmal 70% after five years, and likely to rise. This week in California, the state's governor signed the FAST Act. It seeks to set a new wage level of $22 an hour for fast--
Your time has expired.
Also with automatic annual wage increase of up to 3.5%. In New York City, our FDNY EMTs survive on poverty wages of $18 an hour. Could you afford to live on that wage without having a second or third job? Could you afford to ever have children? Being a member of FDNY EMS--
Can you wrap up? Thank you, whenever you can.
--with every single 911 call, someone's life is on the line, and we respond to about 2 million emergencies every year. I ask you, why would someone stay on this job? 70% of our EMTs and paramedics run away quickly from the agency in just the first five years, and that's before congestion pricing makes being even more unaffordable.
So can you wrap up? Thank you.
I have a long testimony, so if you have any questions, I would like to also answer some comments that were made by others on the panel, if that's afforded to me.
Okay, we have about 50 people to speak, so we'd love hearing you, but we have a lot to go. So we can read, we will read every word of your testimony.
Okay. I just want to say that they were saying before that the attrition rate in New York City is at 8%. For EMS, it's over 20%. EMS and inspectors are not treated the same, as they talk about the uniform, promotions, and employment. There are so many things. I will submit my testimony to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, we'll hear from Saul Fishman, followed by Anna Chapani, and then Michael Caratzas.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon. Have I been unmuted by what?
We hear you.
Okay. I'm Saul Fishman, president of the Civil Service Bar Association. We represent attorneys in virtually every city agency. I'm here to testify about how the legal divisions have been greatly diminished in staffing, how dedicated employees have had their morale crushed, leave-city employment-- how dedicated employees have had their morale crushed, leave-city employment, and how policies of the city and the unrealistic mayor have made the bad situation worse every day. There's no way I can say, you know, the experience of people in for the agencies in two minutes, but there's, it's horrible and it's getting worse. We had 1,057 members as of, right as the pandemic started. We're now down to 831 members, so we've lost 226 hard-working attorneys, 22% of our attorneys. I have an email from an attorney at Tax and Litigation Commission, which very well illustrates, you know, how it's become untenable and how the situation is badly affecting the public, how the delays are causing people not to get prompt hearings, not to get all kinds of things, how delays, how it's basically untenable for the public as well as the staff and why they're continuing to, expecting to continue to lose people. And this isn't just a TLC. At ACS, we've lost from, started at 246 people, down to 177, a drop of about 28%. These are people who could protect the next, prevent the next Nick S. Murray Brown kind of murder situation at the hands of their so-called guardians at Human Rights Commission, where we went from 25 down to 15, a loss of approximately 40% of skilled personnel-
Your time has expired.
... discrimination above department buildings. They've seen approximately 40% reduction in their ranks. You know, I have some specific suggestions in terms of how to improve things, which I'd like to briefly get to.
Can you wrap up, sir? You have to, when you wrap up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest that you closely scrutinize the delays involved with onboarding and assist that each agency show their attempts at recruiting, that given the difficulty in recruiting, our titles should be exempted from the residency requirements. And some commissions are, virtually all of them are afraid to take that necessary step. Should also amend the administrative, that same administrative code, not only to cover difficulty to recruit, but also difficulty, difficult to retain titles. There are so many important things. And by the way, does it make any sense that the attorneys at Corporation Council are deemed are exempt because they're difficult, allegedly difficult to recruit, but not us, the attorneys who went to the same law schools away now?
Sir, you need to-
So there's a lot of politics.
You need to wrap up. We'll read your testimony. If you could wrap up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And finally, where we need some legislation requiring each agency to prepare a policy offering employers the ability to work remotely. And should follow that up with demanding each commissioner come in and justify people who are included, excluded from such a policy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Anna Chapani and then Michael Caratzas.
Your time will begin.
I'm Anna Chapani, the Vice President for Research at the Citizens Budget Commission, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. As we've heard, there are well over 20,000 vacant positions. First, I want to say the city can and should reduce the number of authorized vacant positions without impeding its ability to provide high-quality, efficient services. But it should also strategically fill the vacant positions in agencies and units that are currently unable to deliver the volume and quality of service that New Yorkers rightly expect. And these current challenges are the result of management procedural and labor market challenges that the city should address. We have five specific recommendations. I submitted longer written testimonies, so this will be a bridged version. First, current policies and procedures are inflexible, cumbersome, and better facilitate control than hiring and serving service delivery. Move available positions to where they are needed and be nimble in reallocation. Agencies should be budgeted smartly and efficiently and then allowed to hire to fill vacant positions. A two-for-one hiring freeze is not appropriate at this time. Many offices are involved and control multiple steps of the hiring process, including posting positions, making offers, and setting start dates. Speeding up the process, ensuring adequate, timely civil service tests and lists is especially important in the current competitive market. The city should provide training, upskilling, and advancement opportunities to acknowledge and retain high performers. Given the tight labor market, providing more skills training and negotiating flexibility and work rule changes could increase the attractiveness of public service. A longer-term solution would be to consider what changes and improvements to public sector employment and civil service systems are needed to attract and retain the next generation of talented, hard-working, and innovative public servants. And fifth, report transparently on vacancies, hires, separations, and promotions. The city's hiring processes are somewhat of a black box. Shedding light on the length and complexity of this process would be useful to assess-
Your time has expired.
-how effective the city's processes are and allow policymakers and the public to identify bottlenecks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I hope you submit your testimony because it's a little hard to hear from the sound. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did submit the written-
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from Michael Caratzas. After Michael, we'll hear from John Matland and then James Hoag, George, and George Gutierrez, and Mary Ann Pizzatola.
Good afternoon. Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. I'm a 19-year employee of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, appearing before you as President of Chapter 41 of Local 375 DC 37, representing 34 employees of the commission in the Landmarks Preservation, a urban archaeologist and research scientist titles, and our members, nearly all of whom have masters, degrees, or doctorates, do the day-to-day work of the commission, reviewing work applications, working on historic district designations. Really, all the day-to-day work of the commission is, is, most of it is done by our members. I did, I realize my time is short. I did submit written testimony, so I hope you will look at that, which goes into a little more detail. But the one point I'd like to make is this, that while the pandemic and the great resignation may have exacerbated the staffing crisis, they did not cause them. The causes go back 20 years. Over the past 20 years, our pay, our salaries, our compensation has declined relative to inflation about 12%. So the hiring rate now is 56,000. If it were in line with inflation, it would be 64,000. So salaries are way down. It's hard to hire and retain people, and there is no quick and easy solution to this. It's not having more job fairs. It's not going to high schools to recruit. It's, you just have to pay people more in line with the private sector and, you know, what they need to live in this city. Something that wasn't mentioned, I didn't hear mentioned, was the shift from Tier 4 to Tier 6. When I started with the commission in 2003, I started with Tier 4-
Your time has expired.
... and it was a major benefit. And we hope that the city, that you will actively look to raise salaries, reform Tier 6 to bring it in line with Tier 4, and encourage and allow for permanent telework for our members.
Thank you very much.
I'd now like to welcome John Matland, James Hoag, George Gutierrez, and Mary Ann Pizzatola, up to the dais.
Quiet, please.
That was John Matland, James Hoag, George Gutierrez, and Mary Ann Pizzatola.
You can begin.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. First, I would like to say I wish Jen Psaki stayed so we could circle back on some of those things. But sadly, I have some people to listen and that's good because I have a lot of people here that are still unemployed. And I, as a healthcare worker, used to go into rooms before we had data that proved that 99% of the people that get this survive, before we had data that knows how widespread it was. I took my N95, my one-issued N95 in a paper bag that's good for peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, and I went into these rooms, people with bilateral chest tubes, aerosol eyes, freshly vented, moving them onto my CAT scan table. And then my religious exemption was denied, and after 18 years in the healthcare field, I had to run for U.S. Congress. And I am going to probably be on the city council in about two years, so nice to meet you guys. But what we have here is a lot of unemployed people. And what's the retention? We heard about nice lounges. The first retention scheme would be try not to have people thrown in front of trains on the way to work. Also, have affordable housing, meaning you could raise wages or we can stop taking everybody's salary and garnishing it every time they drive five miles over the speed limit or 10 miles over the speed limit in a school zone at 2 o'clock in the morning. There's a lot of different things that we find. We're overtaxed, we're overburdened, and a lot of us are only here because we can't help but fight. I will not stop fighting. I'll move to Florida after I win the fight. How about that? But I ain't moving before that. We have a lot of tyranny going on, and this says right above you, a government of the people, by the people, for the people. And I think that a lot of the people are upset with what's going on.
Why, so we can hear him?
I, you know, you could clap, guys, because unlike everyone else, 10 seconds, I'll leave you with that on the clock. Thank you.
My name is George Gutierrez. I was, I worked in schools as a custodian for 21 years. Last year, I was denied an exemption, and the exemptions are, the mandates, the exemptions are arbitrary, they don't have rhyme or reason. People put in basically the same exemptions I did, got them. I'm out of a job 21 years. People at my church, there were people that were denied exemptions, people that saw the writing on the wall and just left. Two teachers, 20-plus years. A school nurse with 18 years, that's 80-plus years of experience, just out for a mandate that had no science behind it. If we'd like to close the gap that we have, we have this vacancy gap in the city that we've been talking about all day today. If you'd like to close that, as Ms. Palladino, Mr. Holden, Joanne, and some of the other councilmen have been pointing out, give us our jobs back. Let's follow the science that hasn't been being followed. And I would appreciate, you know, all the council people looking into that, discussing it with the mayor. And I would hope that we can have our jobs back soon because there's no reason for what's going on. It's been completely arbitrary, and we could close that gap on vacancies. So I'll leave you with 40 seconds and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Quiet, please, so we can hear the speakers.
I'm a proud New York City school teacher of 28 years, plus-years, who worked through the entirety of the 2020-2021 school year, five days a week, teaching five classes online and reporting to school once a week for professional duties once school opened. For half of that time, there was no vaccine and all treatment options were callously swept aside. I did not ask for any time off. Over the last year, I got an opportunity to relive some history and see what being involved in a civil rights movement might be like. If only I could turn on a fastball or dunk a basketball, I might have a chance to come back to work in this city. Since I didn't wish to consent to participate in the great vaccine experiment, I and my brothers and sisters in the movement lost our jobs, lost our freedom in many respects, lost the right to go in stores, were called disgusting names, and compelled to wear these disgusting masks that graciously, do not have on right now, were subject to quarantines. This is all done without any studies or experiments to validate it. Now, there is a lot of talk about boosters and monkeypox vaccines using the same mRNA delivery system as the COVID vaccines, which we now know doesn't stay in your arm, which we now know travels and settles spike protein in an individual's vital organs, which we now know does not prevent you from getting the virus or prevent the transmission of it. Shouldn't the vax, shouldn't the mandates at least be halted until we find out what is happening to all the young people who are getting heart issues, neurological problems, and blood clots at extremely alarming rates? Time's up. Damn it.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Do we have Mary Ann Pizzatola?
Good afternoon, Chair Brewer, Councilman, Chair Brewer, Chair De La Rosa, and the members of Civil Service and Labor and the Oversight and Investigation Committees. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today and maintain, on maintaining the city's municipal workforce. My name is Mary Ann Pizzatola. I am retired from New York City EMS FDNY. I am the President of FDNY EMS Retirees, and I am also the President of the NYC Organization of Public Service Retirees, the group that sued the city successfully to stop the city from forcing us into Medicare Advantage or charging us a penalty premium to stay in our current plans. Workers join city service for many reasons: service, community, love of work we do, the excitement and joy of having an impact on someone's life, the lights and sirens like I did, or the benefits that we would be entitled to if we stay until retirement. We retirees counted on the promise to us that we would collect a pension and receive health insurance. No city worker said, "I'm joining the city and I'm going to stay here for my career because the salary is amazingly high." The salaries were not high compared to our private sector counterparts, but job security and benefits attracted us and we stayed. Just yesterday, the Municipal Labor Committee voted to support a change in the Administrative Code 12-126 that would permit them and the city to change the statutory cap for city health insurance coverage for any class of individuals they so choose. The MLC and the city tried to force retirees into Medicare Advantage last year, and our lawsuit stopped them because their plan violated the law. That's the same law that city council enacted in 1967. These health benefits were promised to us and to current city employees. We earned them and we paid for them. If you permit this amendment to be introduced and adopted, your ability to attract and retain workers will become even harder. Why would anyone join city government and dedicate their lives to work for the city, give their heart, soul, and their health in some cases just to have inferior healthcare during their city employment, or have what they have already earned in healthcare benefits stripped away from them in retirement?
Thank you. If you could wrap up, thank you.
It will be difficult to attract and retain people when the fear of what they were working towards can be taken away. Sitting in this very council chamber, former councilmembers Mario Marola, Edmund Farrell, Mary Pinkett, Eileen Ryan, Miriam Friedlander, and Peter Vallone, protected retirees. I think if they were all here today, they would agree with me that the best way to attract and maintain a loyal workforce is to keep the promises made to employees and retirees. I might also add that the city should not be pitting unions against one another and making them give up benefits promised to their retirees. I'd say in short, keep your promises. You will find that people will work, want to work for the city because it is the greatest city in the world. But if the city work foresees that they are risking what they earned, they will take their experience they gained in city employment and work somewhere else.
Thank you very much.
We'll now hear from four Zoom panelists, Brenda Walker, followed by Stephen Vavaski, and then Michael Noonan, followed by Nicholas Shearman. Brenda Walker, you may be getting one ready.
Your time will begin.
To the chair and the panelists. My name is Brenda Walker. Excuse me. I'm a Local 1549 Chair, Chair of the HRA Chap, I'm sorry, Chapter Chair of HRA and Grievance Representative for the State Administrative Authorities Division. So we're experiences, experiencing this great resignation and now hearing that the vacancy rate has risen to 90% in social services, the agency that I represent. My members are minorities and predominantly women of color, mothers, and some of them which are homeless themselves. They are, they have been on the front lines providing vital services to the public and have worked the mandated over time, but they did not get the essential pay or the hero's pay, not even a thank you. So pressure coming from the top, our members are resigned quicker due to low salaries, lack of affordable housing, and the cost of living out of control. They get blamed for not producing while experiencing a breakdown in the systems' equipment that don't properly work. They get maltreated, it's bullying behavior, and, and these are toxic environments that they're working in, desperate treatment. They're experiencing mental fatigue, stress, and, you know, it's a silent killer. And again, the salaries are too low, the horrible pension, and all these other things that I'm hearing from my other, other people that have been testifying. We have been, we have eligibility specialist lists that have been in existence for 10 years. The lists are only- The lists are only supposed to be for four or five years. I don't understand how that has happened. Thank you, DCAST. So we have members that have waited to be hired. So during, throughout that time, of course, they have gone to other, other jobs. We are lacking clerical associates and eligibility specialists that need to be hired right away. These are the people that have worked on the front line and SNAP and Medicaid, HASA, InfoLine, servicing the public. So we cannot continue to work like this. The pressure is coming from the top. It is, it is hard for our workers to continue to do the work, to do more with less. We cannot go back to those times. They have not worked then, they do not work now. They are pigeonholed into these positions. They are not getting their promotions that they have been promised. Being on the list, something has got to change. Yes, this is, more hiring has to happen right now. I understand this is, this is the sanctuary city, but they are now being forced to, to service people that are coming from these other communities while our natives have been waiting for years and years and years and dealing with this homeless crisis and all these other crises.
Thank you very much.
So I'm just asking you, thank you, just asking you that you take into consideration this and please hire more workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we hear from Stephen Vavaski, and then Michael Noonan and Nicholas Shearman. Stephen Vavaski, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. I will refer, thank you, council, for taking our testimony. I will refer you to my written testimony for more detail, but in brief, I would like to say I think it is absolutely hilarious that anyone from DCAST or OMB would use words like expeditious or quick in anything those agencies do. If you listen to any city employee, they will tell you those steps are the longest ones in the hiring process. I would also like to mention that our ability to remote work or not remote work is a serious threat to our ability to retain staff, especially amongst our technical workers, our IT forces and lawyers and other skilled knowledge professionals. They can more easily get higher-paying jobs in the private sector that they can work remotely. Being able to work remotely is a tremendous increase to the quality of life, and it is a tremendous equity issue as well. And that is what I will leave you with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Michael Noonan and then Nicholas Shearman. Michael Noonan, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Yes, I am a New York City Parks and Recreation worker from Local 983. I just want to ask, what does the city plan to do for the several hundred CPWs and CSAs that are set to lose their job next week that have worked for over two years or more? That they consider workers who have been working for over two years or more seasonal, and they're all going to lose their job next week if they are not given an extension or a permanent position? And these are several hundred park workers who keep the parks clean. You know, they work in every single sorts of weather, at all five boroughs, and I think it's very sad that they're all going to lose their job, that they've been working since 2020, 2021, five days a week, every single day, to keep all the city parks very neat for people to go there, and now they're all about to lose their job. So how does the city plan to make them not lose their job? And that's all I have to say.
I have a question for the panelists. What, what's the position that you have at the Parks Department? And were you notified that you would be losing that position?
Yes, the city seasonal aide and CPW are all losing their jobs by September 13th.
All right, we will look into that because we were under the understanding that that was remedied in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Nicholas Shearman. After that, I'll be calling on an in-person panel. If you hear your name, you can start making your way to the dais. C. Smith, Eve Shire, Bonnie Scala, Cala, T., Cala Tidides, and Billy Cozis. Nicholas Shearman, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, chairs and committee members, for holding this vital hearing. My name is Nicholas Shearman. I'm a New York City Parks employee as well. I work at the Capitol Division, and I'm a proud member of DC 37. I testify today as a worker and a New York City resident deeply concerned about the rapid attrition taking place at city agencies. I strongly recommend the City Council, working with the state legislature if necessary, pass a law to offer city workers whose jobs can be done via telework, as proven during the pandemic, the option to telework two days a week for non-compressed schedules and one day a week for compressed schedules. I also urge the City Council to advocate for substantial raises for all city workers and to urge the mayor to start negotiations with DC 37 to replace the contract with, which expired last year. It's an honor to be municipal employee and serving the people of this great city. However, the private sector has job openings that offer people flexibility and higher salaries. This has attracted thousands of city employees to leave as people need reduced commuting time before and after work to help take care of their own personal healthcare, child, and elder care needs. This makes sense to me, especially in a state where more universal healthcare and paid leave has only recently been introduced and where universal healthcare and elder care is not a reality, even in this deadly pandemic. Also, less commuting time made possible by teleworking allows people to have more leisure time to de-stress from the demands of life and work, which has been especially so during the global pandemic and all the associated complications that came with it. People realize in this pandemic that life is short. When they could be working a job that allows them to work one or two days from home and pays a more livable wage in the face of inflation, people don't want to spend two or three hours a day taking the train or driving to work. They're good or paid when they have a more favorable living condition to work in the private sector.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. I've submitted the rest of my testimony via email. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the in-person panel. Panelists, you can go one by one. Please just state your name before you give your testimony.
My name is Billy Cozis, and I'm a healthcare worker. I was a healthcare worker, worked for 13 years in a nursing home. And I was let go because I refused to put this stuff in my body, the COVID vaccine, experimental. It's against my religious beliefs. They accepted my religious belief, right? They gave me an exemption, but they could not accommodate me, which is illegal, which is unlawful. The Department of Health took it upon themselves to remove religious exemptions from healthcare workers when they don't have that authority. Okay? This is complete lawlessness, and it was allowed to happen. Okay? The Department of Health does not make laws. The Assembly, the Senate, they come together, they make bills, and if they pass them, the governor signs them. This is total lawlessness. And now we're seeing that the science was never followed from the beginning. The masks don't work, the COVID vaccines did not work, people are getting booster after booster after booster, and they're still getting COVID. Then they changed the goalposts. They say, oh, you know, oh, it's not that it prevents COVID, but it prevents you from dying, it prevents you from getting sicker. It's all bull and it's all fake science. Okay? And now the CDC comes out and says that there's no difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated, yet we're still playing these games, these pandemic games that, that it's not happening. Okay? So when are we, and I, and thank you, public servants who are here right now, who are respecting us and stayed and listened, because the other half is disrespectful and disgusting who left. Okay? Very disgusting.
Quiet, 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 please.
We sat here to listen to you guys, and, and half of you are saying nonsense all day long, nonsense. And I'm here patient, listening to you guys. Okay? Talking about silly little things. And this is the most serious thing that can happen, is, is you guys violating our rights. Okay? And we're going to win this battle, whether it is in the courts, whatever's going to happen, we're going to win this battle because the truth is on our side, history is on our side, science is on our side, and we got this.
Quiet, please, quiet, quiet. Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Scala Kildides. I thank the council for the opportunity to speak, especially my council rep, Vicky Palladino, who has been a tremendous support to me and to my family. I was a New York City public school teacher for 28 years. I was hired in 1993. I was fired for misconduct on March 17, 2022, after multiple attempts of applying and attempting to get a religious exemption for vaccination. They were all rejected. I am a woman of faith, and I was fired for that faith. I must add that I also had a religious exemption to vaccination in place for my children for years that was approved by the Department of Education. That stood until law changed. I can't say anything now because he already left, but that was a law that Jeffrey Dinowitz strong-armed. Why did the DOE believe me in 2017 and did not believe me now? I have to also add that I have a disabled child who just returned to his special education program yesterday after exclusion. He is now 18. The law that excluded him no longer applies to him. He is back in school getting his special education services despite his vaccination status. I am missing picking Brayden up from school today on his second day at 675 to be here today. I'm also missing the second day of school today as a pre-K teacher, which I was for the last seven years. Believe me when I say that pre-K children have been harmed by the inability to properly staff classrooms. The substitute who took my job in October 2021 had no early childhood experience. I should be in my classroom. I should be working this mandate that took this from me. It also took away how I provide for my family and how I feed my children. The pandemic is over. We are here mostly maskless. The governor just lifted the mandates for the mass transit. I got 20 seconds. I want to work. I have worked every day in person last year. I worked in person, not remote, the year before. I want to return to my school. I will never go against my faith. The city has tied my hands. It is my understanding that there are 4,000 vacancies in the DOE vacancy list, plus whomever got fired this week. I have seen that list online. It makes no sense to turn away experienced, dedicated teachers who want to work.
If you could wrap up, thank you.
Please talk some sense into Mary Adams. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quiet, please, quiet.
Hello, my name is Craig. I'm here for city workers. I want to thank Mr. Holder, Ms. Areola, Ms. Palladino, and Ms. Verlarenko for standing up for city workers. We won't forget when it's time to vote. Y'all city council members who hasn't stood up and you know it's wrong, what they're doing to city workers, city workers has voted for y'all throughout your political career. From Adams, de Blasio, you name them, city workers has came to bat. And city council should not sit by and not speak up for them. When y'all didn't have a vote, you was begging for votes and didn't have a window to throw it out. You came to city workers and asked them to vote for you and to watch them, to see what's going on while they getting ready to hire 25 teachers from another country. And you sit here and you don't say nothing. And these people pay union dues for years. It's a shame, and we are gonna remember. You better make sure we gonna remember when you come asking for our votes in front of train stations. And now we gotta beg. We gotta beg these people that sitting up here lying. While they eating rice with no gravy and everybody else is getting a check. You better talk up for them because we gonna remember. We gonna remember because you're gonna come again. That's why they want us to vote now.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Get the book.
Quiet, please, quiet.
We will not forget. That's how all y'all got your jobs.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we'll hear from several, next, we'll hear from several Zoom panelists. I'd now like to welcome Virginia Elaine to testify, followed by Luda Demikovskaya. Virginia Elaine, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Please go ahead. Ms. Virginia Allen. Ms. Allen, go ahead.
I'm so sorry I didn't hear you. My name is Virginia W. Allen, and I was working for Yankee Stadium. At the beginning of the pandemic, I had eight part-time jobs. And then I lost all of these jobs in 2020, in 2020. I was hopeful that I was able to work two of these jobs and two of them came back. When Kathy Hochul and Mayor Adams took over, all hope was lost. I was suddenly fired from both jobs, one of which was my beloved Yankee Stadium. I worked at Yankee Stadium for 16 years, and it was my favorite job. But now because of these draconian mandates, I am unable to work there anymore. I am the single parent of an autistic 16-year-old. Currently, I am on welfare, and starvation is the norm. Eviction and homelessness is imminent, and I fear that I will break. And I know that my son will not be able to handle it if we have to go to a shelter. I have lost everything, and the only thing keeping me going is my son. We have no resources, and I am losing hope every day. There are many days when I cannot get out of bed due to the overwhelming despair that I feel. Being unvaccinated in New York City is like being in untouchable in India. We are maligned and demonized for no other reason than we are declaring my body my choice. No one has the right to dictate that I must inject myself with an experimental drug. These vaccines have not been tested, and the long-term effects include myocarditis, blood clots, and death. I will continue to stand on my square and say no to these vaccines. I fight for all the workers who were fired because we all know that the panacea for this virus is not found in a needle. But mostly, I fight for all those people that committed suicide from sheer loneliness and isolation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. Quiet, please, quiet, because we want, we want to hear the next speaker. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
I'd now, I'd now like to welcome Luda Demikovskaya, followed by Matthew Connor, and then Iliana Gordon. Luda Demikovskaya, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Luda, you may need to accept the unmute request.
Your time starts now.
Let's come back to her. I'd now like to welcome Matthew Connor to testify, followed by Iliana Gordon.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Commander, 17-year veteran, New York City Fire Department, currently a fire lieutenant as well last year. I filed for a reasonable condemnation request that has been applied to the May Agency, claiming undue hardship that does not exist to employ me. My appeal, see, pal, of which I mentioned DCAST is the architect of that plan, to be answered by last November. I currently, I have a family to feed, I have a career to finish. I've been denied the opportunity for equal opportunity employment by the City of New York during this process. I'm not sure what would consider my requests, which are very well-founded in both my medical exemption requests and mine. But I do not consider the past nine months to be a reasonable answer for simple reasons. But I do not consider the past nine months to be a reasonable answer for a simple request for reasonable accommodation. In addition to my request that had been under appeal, I have also sought out medical care to find out for the safety of the administration of this medical intervention. Should I? During the course of that investigation, I have found that I happen to known components that could injure or kill me if I choose the process that's keeping me out of work. My agency, the Fire Department of the City of New York, has given accommodation for over two months and has not given me an answer. Due to this, it's happened to New York City workers that have served this city during the height of the pandemic. I have made, I incurred during the line of duty, serving the people of the city of New York.
Can you wrap up?
And I want, to my request, this is a labor issue that is not been, I'm here to make sure that you are aware that the city of New York, the people that have served this city well.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Quiet, quiet, please, please, go ahead.
Next, we'll hear from Eliana Gordon. After that, we'll be calling a in-person panel to come up. So if you hear your name, please start making your way to the table now. Cassandra McFadden, Mo Mawuli-Olivier, Patricia Pirlo, and Marhel Cola. If I mentioned your name, please make your way to the table now, and we'll hear from Eliana Gordon now. It looks like Eliana is no longer on the Zoom, so we'll move to the in-person panelists. You can go one by one. Please just state your name before you give your testimony.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mawuli Oliveri, born to Caribbean parents, born and raised in Brooklyn, New York, went to school in New York, Brooklyn. I'm a homeowner in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn. I've taught in the city of Brooklyn, starting in 1998. I'm a licensed social studies teacher. I have a bachelor's degree, master's degree, all the qualifications. Unfortunately, I lost my job due to the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. They denied my request for religious exemption. And I live in Bed-Stuy. I want to highlight that I did reach out to my city councilperson, Shay Jose, who completely ignored me. I wrote letters explaining my situation. So I completely am very appreciative of you guys sitting and hearing, especially you're not from my district. So throughout this whole pandemic, we felt, well, I felt basically in Bed-Stuy that I was voiceless. No one was willing to hear my claim. But I want to let you guys know now that we're still here. We have this organization called Educators for Freedom. And one of the reasons why we started it, because even though the city has fired me, I am still an educator. I'm still a teacher. You get what I'm saying? For 23 years, I worked with the city schools, public school systems, young black boys in the schools that need to see more people like them, to be role models, and to show them how to make it outside of this city because it's difficult. It's difficult coming up in the cities of Brooklyn, New York. It's hard. We need role models. I realize that the kids, when I look at them, I see myself. I am definitely a representative of the kids, and I'm sad that I'm not able to continue to do what I'm called to do because this is not just a job for me. Like I said, I was born in Brooklyn. I am Brooklyn. So when I see these children, I am them, they are me. All right? It's Brooklyn raising Brooklyn, New York raising New York. And the fact that the city and the mayor, who's also a product of the city, can't recognize that the injustice that's done to all of us who, because of what we chose, is having a residual effects on what's happening in the city. So don't be surprised by what's going on in our school systems right now. Don't be surprised because people like us, who are dedicated to the jobs that we are doing, are being deliberately barred from doing what God has called us to do.
Thank you. Quiet, quiet, please, quiet, so we can hear the speakers. Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to say good afternoon to everyone. Thank you for the time you're giving us. I'm just going to give a brief history of myself. I once was a single mother, and the city of New York, God bless the city of the New York, they gave me an opportunity. They paid for my babysitter so I could finish high school. As a result, I went on to higher education, eventually got married, thank God. But what I'm saying is to say what? Look at the foundation, the wisdom of the city of New York. Once I became employable, marketable, I had to go to become a math teacher. By the way, I'm a retired math teacher and came back out of retirement during the heart of the pandemic. I did my own, yeah, I did it voluntarily. I came in always with my test results. Everybody thought I was crazy. I literally did in, now listen to this, as I'm teaching, I had one student to my left, one to my right, and I also was doing what they call online. It was against a UFT contract, but because of my dedication, because I never forget the bridges that carried me across, the city blessed me, so I said, I'm coming out, I'm going to help this city. And because I did not take the vaccine, I was terminated. 25 years, they need math teachers. And I recently saw a young boy on the train. He said, and I engage people, and he said, oh, I'm going to the seventh grade. I said, fantastic. And I said, how much is, if I said one half plus one half, what would that be? He said, two over four. I almost fainted. And I'm going to teach everyone the basic rule of fractions that takes you into algebraic math and higher math. When you see the denominators, that bottom numbers are the same, you keep the bottom number, and you just add the top number, which is the numerator. Get us back in the classroom. Get everybody back to work. You need us. God bless you all.
Quiet, quiet, please, quiet, quiet.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariel Cola. I was a police officer. I had the privilege to join this department, the New York City Police Department, in 2018, and also was granted a religious accommodation because I keep the biblical Sabbath, which is Friday sunset to Saturday sunset. Unfortunately, when this mandate came out, I was forced, or I was told, or take it, or you get terminated. I chose to get terminated because I didn't do anything wrong to resign. And I believe in normal, I believe in, I believe in that we should have a choice. We work, the police officers worked during the pandemic every single day. We worked during the riots every single day without complaining, none of us. And even now, there are police officers in transit that are exhausted because they are working 12 hours a day and with some time with no days off because of a shortage. So I'm here to say, bring us back and these mandates. I want to tell to Mr. Mayor, tear down this mandate now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, next, we'll hear from a number of Zoom panelists. I'd first like to welcome Daniel Sorrend, and then Peter Kandonov, and then Lilian Fincher, followed by John McCary. Daniel Sorrend, you may begin when ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Craring. I'm married, I'm married and a father of two beautiful children. I was previously employed by the NYPD from January 2013 to July 2022. I was a detective with the Brooklyn North Violent Crime Squad, formerly known as the Brooklyn North Gang Squad. As a kid, there were two things I wanted to be when I grew up, a New York Yankee and a police officer. Obviously, the first option did not pan out, but I was able to fulfill my dream and become a police officer. Ironically, if I had, my testimony would not be necessary today because I would be exempt from the vaccine mandate. Unfortunately, I am not a multi-billionaire athlete or entertainer. Therefore, I am not eligible to be part of this protected class in the New York City caste system. Not only has the city of New York violated the religious liberty of every city employee who has been denied a religious accommodation, but the mandate itself is completely devoted to this law. Many frontline workers have had COVID since we could not work from home when the city shut down. Therefore, we acquired natural immunity to this virus. Going back to May 5th, 2021, during a Governor Cuomo press conference, he stated, you cannot mandate vaccines because these vaccines are approved under something called an emergency use authorization, and by law, you cannot mandate a vaccine approved under an emergency use authorization. I myself went to a vaccine site back in June of this year and requested Comorin 80 or Spike Vax, which are the only two FDA-approved versions of the vaccine. They were not available, and I was told they have never been available at the NYPD back site. Also, as of last month, the CDC has revised their COVID-19 guidelines and stated, CDC's COVID-19 prevention recommendations no longer differentiate based on a person's vaccination status because breakthrough infections occur. Though they are generally mild, the persons who have had COVID-19 but are not vaccinated have some degree of protection against severe illness from their previous infection. Combine all of this with the fact that back in August of 2021, the director of the CDC, Rochelle Walensky, stated in reference to the vaccine, what they cannot do anymore is prevent transmission. That is, that was two months before the inception of the vaccine mandate. If anyone could explain a reasonable argument for firing thousands of city workers for not receiving a vaccine that does not stop transmission or infection from COVID, I would love to hear it. The simple fact is that there is no logical argument that can be made. You cannot make that make sense. Now, nearly a year later, after losing thousands of city employees to termination, resignation, forced retirement, the mayor is still not budging on the mandate, crime is out of control, and reaching epidemic levels while COVID, excuse me, I'm just about done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
While, excuse me, I'm just about done. While COVID is reaching epidemic, while crime is reaching epidemic levels, while COVID is now reaching endemic levels, the mandate carries on under the guise of public safety. Unlike COVID, there is a very simple cure to the violent crime surge in our city. It's more police, it is experienced police. What the mandate is doing is making our city far less safe.
Okay.
Losing thousands of experienced police officers, myself being one.
Sir, you got to wrap up, please. Thank you. We got to wrap up.
All right, one last point. Mayor Adams may not remember me, but on the fourth day of his day in office, he was president of my press conference for my gang takedown. I was the lead investigator on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll now hear from Peter Kandonov, followed by Lilian Fincher, and then John McCary. Peter Kandonov, you may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a police officer. I was police officer until May of this year, with 11 years on, and I loved my job. I was lucky enough to secure myself another job, but I can say this, I will gladly come back to the job that I love. Now, I wish DCAST people stayed back because I really had a few questions for them, such as what makes them a religious authority over my religious accommodation request, where one person with the same religion was able to get it and me with the same request, not. And what I find funny, actually, is that I worked during pandemic and risking my life, and I got COVID twice. Now, booster shots are not mandated. However, if person took just original shot, they already don't have immunity from COVID. Where me getting COVID twice, I have more immunity probably than even people with booster. So to Mayor Adams, I ask you to please remove the mandate that is not needed. We have officers that are willing to come back because they love what they do. The other thing is, according to the latest statistics, more officers left by June of this year than all last year. And officers that did not want to get vaccinated are part of that number. But unfortunately, DCAST does not keep record, even though it's hard to believe. And the other thing I want to mention is that anyone who wants to join this job, if they hear any news that officers don't have contracts for many years, if officers are not treated well, especially nowadays, there is no respect for the uniform. And in many cases, officers, especially in the transit district, sometimes not seeing their family for days, why would anyone want to have this job? You know, that's all I got, guys. Please, remove the mandates.
Thank you very much.
We'll now hear from Lilian Fincher, followed by John McCary. Lilian Fincher, you may begin when ready.
Hello, thank you for having me. I will be reading portions of my written statement. I currently work for the Department of Education, Division of Early Childhood Education. However, I resigned this week and will serve my last day later this month. I have resigned because I no longer feel my work has impact. I am unclear how my work fits into a collective mission, and therefore, I don't feel I can provide my best for children in this environment. It is my understanding that in the nearly nine months since our deputy chancellor began, about 200 employees have either resigned or secured transfers out of our division. This has been extremely destabilizing and upsetting. With each person's exit, institutional knowledge has been lost, and a once-sustainable structure of workflow is now crumbling. To my knowledge, no effort has been made to assess why people are leaving or what changes are needed to retain these valuable public servants. And I will add, there's been no attempt to backfill these positions. In fact, the division is currently planning to transfer even more employees out of their current roles within the division. This swift reduction of staff is also troubling, given that our division's current leadership lacks extensive systems-level experience, which is essential when serving thousands of children and early childhood educators. I am deeply concerned by the environment I am working in, how decisions are being made, and I worry that the damage done to our early childhood system over the past nine months will take years to repair. To retain city workers, we need strong leaders. I urge the city council to provide more oversight regarding the selection of new leaders for the Department of Education. I also urge the city council to mandate a minimum level of programming continuity during DOE leadership transitions so that the uncertainty, frustration, and inefficiencies experienced over the past nine months are not repeated for thousands of additional children, families, and city employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from John McCary, and then I'll be calling up a number of in-person panelists. If you hear your name called now, please make your way up to the table. Daniel Granier, Joy Amanda, Brendan Fogarty, and Catherine Jean, you can make your way up to the table now, and we'll hear from John D. McCary next.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. This is John D. McCary. I was forced into a retirement. I'm an 18-year lieutenant. I have zero disciplinary history. I've been involved in thousands of arrests. I have hundreds to my own name. I've been involved in thousands of emergency incidents without incident. I was denied a religious exemption for my sincerely held religious beliefs, as well as a medical exemption for the COVID-19 infection that I received in the line of duty while serving New York City during the early days of the pandemic. I have natural forming antibodies that were approved, and that was denied. New York City has failed to tell the unvaccinated, who are now the most marginalized community in New York City history, what undue hardship we are causing, New York City, that others are not. This marginalized community, along with our children, have been segregated, forced to be masked and tested when others were not, not allowed to eat in restaurants, partake in society, play in sports, attend after-school events, and eventually, we were forced from employment without even the ability to collect unemployment. We are being told our lives do not matter. City workers, city workers and residents accused of crimes are afforded due process and a trial before facing such consequences. Many continue working even after they are found guilty. All of this has caused irreparable harm to our mental, physical, and financial health, as well as a strain on all of our relationships. Murderers, rapists, and pedophiles are treated better than the unvaccinated. All I am asking is for New York City to be true to what it said on paper. Be true that you respect religious liberty and equal protection under the law. Be true that you respect medical freedom and truly believe the words, my body, my choice. Be true to that you respect others' philosophical opinions and want to give everyone a voice to the table. Be true to the United States Constitution, the New York State Constitution, the Human Rights Act of New York State, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, federal, state, and city OEO laws, as well as the OEO policy of every New York City agency, all who enforce this mandate, all of which clearly define these mandates are illegal. All I am saying All I am saying to our elected officials and to Mayor Adams is be true to what you say on Twitter. New York City is no longer an equal opportunity employer. That title is earned by following the law, not given by winning an election. End the mandates. And to, and to our colleagues and all our OMB and DCAST, the, the fact that you had no answers to these questions, either, it's either incompetent or, or it's intentional and either way, it's unacceptable. You should be the one looking for jobs.
Thank you very much. Quiet, please, quiet. Thank you.
Panelists, you can go in order, just state your name before you begin.
We're gonna try to do panelists next in person because you guys have been here all day and I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Daniel. I'm just an angry citizen of New York. So if you wanted to fill 24,000 jobs, one thing, end the illogical, stupid, anti-science mandates. And I'll mention that they're a crime against humanity. Anyone who perpetuated or pushed this is complicit in that. And I haven't heard one person not, since I've been here today, talk about actual treatments for COVID. Not a stupid mRNA gene therapy, which causes people to get blood clots, myocarditis, you name it. There's literally over a thousand side effects, listed on Pfizer's documents. But, uh, ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, zinc, vitamin D, vitamin C, quercetin, the list goes on and on. A study came out last week, 92% effective rate for ivermectin against COVID mortality, 100% effective against preventing hospitalization, over 80,000 participants. Nobody talks about it. I haven't heard one mention of that. We've known since March of 2020 that hydroxychloroquine treats COVID, and we're still going on and on about this stupid gene therapy. So if you want to fill 24,000 jobs, step one is to end the stupid mandate. Point blank, simple. I'm tired of hearing about flowery cafes. That can do nothing. But we'll circle back to that. And I want to touch on this too. I know this is a employment crisis, but what we're doing to the children is another crime against humanity. I just saw a study from the CDC. They, they took a survey, 13,000 participant survey of children, two years old and younger. Over half of them have systemic side effects from the, from the shot. And from two, two-month-olds to, no, six-month-old to five-years-old, there's over a thousand in the VAERS reports of little babies and toddlers, side effects from the shot, and over 200 of them had to have an emergency room treatment.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you for having us. To those that did stay, thank you for waiting. Uh, thank you for being patient. To my fellow New Yorkers back there, thank you for being patient as well. We strong together. Um, I just have a few things to read. I'm trying to do it real quick. I know I have one minute and 40 seconds. A portion of what I want to read and what I want to express to you all, uh, first and foremost, of course, I am a New Yorker, born and raised. Um, I am third generation Puerto Rican, second generation Colombian. I'm a single mother. My son will be 19 next month, and, uh, he didn't get to finish high school because of the mandates. I was here this time last year to give a testimony about how the school can open back up, uh, with the DOE, because I was also a DOE employee, and today marks 365 days that I've been terminated. Um, and my son sent me a statement, uh, last year that I wanted to read, and I'm trying to read it within 10 seconds. "I won't cry over losing the graduation I had always envisioned. That was rudely changed by the newer system, but it didn't, but it did damage my willpower and will, it damaged my willpower and will scar me for the rest of my life, as graduation is only once and a lifetime experience." That's from my son, 19, who also wrote me a statement. I won't read it right now, but, um, he let me know that seeing me struggle, knowing what I did and knowing what has gone on, it, it breaks him, but he sees how strong I am. Uh, again, today makes 365 days that I have been terminated. I had to face a choice. I was put in a position to choose stability over, uh, virtue and morality, but I chose virtue and morality. I committed my life to staying true to my morality as of 365 days. I was forced into a decision that eventually became comfortable to choose because my principles mean more than a paycheck and my virtue means more than a value. I realize my life struggles, destiny prepared me to testify in front of God and testify in front of you to let you know that you need to repent. 365 days, I had no courage or fire, but that 365 days being terminated lit a fire in me that said, go out and fight for your people, fight for New York City. Just know that the people are coming, and we will be on that side where you are. As you said, quiet, we will be there. Best believe it. Thank you very much. Quiet, please, quiet. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Catherine Jean. I am a registered nurse. Before I was wrongfully terminated, I used to work for the City Hospital, Queens, and also Young Adult Institute. On September 27, 2021, I was placed on leave without pay and was terminated on November 28, 2021 from Queens Hospital. And on January 14 of this year, I was also terminated from YAI. Both of these companies terminated me without acknowledging my sincere religious exemption letter, which I submitted to both companies' human resources. I was discriminating against my religion, which violates my Title VII of the Civil Right Act. We, the people, have the right to choose what goes in our body, especially if it's against our belief. And also, I believe my body is a temple of God, as it says in the Bible, and therefore, by forcing me to take an experiment vaccine, which until now, there is no transparency on what's in this vaccine. Also, myself, I had COVID on, in 2020, and I developed natural immunity, and since then, I've been fine with no COVID. This left a big impact in my life and also in my family, because now I'm left without a job. I love what I used to do as working as a nurse, taking care of my patients, which also, um, is a great reward for me, because it was always my dream as a young girl to become a nurse. And now I feel that for the past year, it's, went down the drain. This has caused great impact, which is financially, I had to remove my children from Christian school because I couldn't afford to keep them there, you know, a lot of bills, I'm in a lot of debt, and it's been very harsh.
Can you wrap up?
And I hope the mayor changed their mind and give us back our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quiet, please, quiet. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brendan Fogarty. I was a captain for the New York City Fire Department. I served for 20 years and, uh, I went from being essential to being disposable from the mandates. And, uh, my religious exemption was denied, and I received those threats of termination, and I retired. I would love to go back to my job. I normally get nervous when I speak in front of, in places like this, and I always say this prayer, "God, grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." We're gonna be on the right side of history. The people who are against us are against civil rights and religious freedom. We deserve to have our jobs back. I could fill this, this, this crisis you have of people who can't figure out how to, how to close this gap, get rid of the mandate, okay? We'll get our jobs back. That'll, that'll narrow the gap. Get rid of the mandate so you can attract more people who actually have values in their lives and will come and work in this city, okay? I never took this job to be rich. I took it to be secure, okay? I knew I wouldn't get rich, but I, I was told it was a secure job. I have four children and a wife, and then they say, it's over. I would have been better off becoming a Met or a Yankee, but I gave up that dream in fourth grade, alright? Fifth grade MVP right here, Good Shepherd Little League, alright? I had a shot. Not anymore, okay? I gave my best years to this city, 20 years, from '21 to '41, and then they take it away at the peak of my earning career. I made it to captain. I went through that process. You should, you should be ashamed of yourselves. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Eric Adams is gonna be on the wrong side of history. The people who looked by are the same people who thought slavery was okay.
Thank you very much.
The same people who thought segregation in Shea Stadium was okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay? You segregated us. I was allowed to work in this city, but I wasn't allowed to eat in a restaurant in this city.
Thank you very much.
I was allowed to work through the pandemic, but I wasn't allowed to eat in a restaurant. I could wear the uniform, go to a burning building, but not eat here.
Thank you very much.
What's wrong with you people? Trust the science. You guys are fucked up.
Thank you. Quiet. Quiet, please. Quiet. Quiet, please, quiet.
Quiet down, please, quiet down.
Quiet. Quiet, please.
I'll now call up the next panel. If you hear your name, you can come up now. Margaret Chu, Lauren O'Rourke, Ingrid Romero, Paul Rivera, Josephine Valdez, and Terraz Since we have three more open chairs, let's also bring up, um, Brian Fain? Flynn? Christina Fela and Nuaka, Nuaka Gao, Nui Fei Jokawa.
Go ahead, whomever would like to start.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Brian Flynn, for the record. Uh, I was a climber-pruner, local 1506, with the Department of Parks and Recreation for the City of New York. For the record, none of the discharged employees did anything wrong. They did nothing wrong legally or morally in order to lose their positions with the City of New York. Secondly, our previous panel, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, was the review board, the appeal board for the exemption process. How do I know that? My emails will prove that. Also, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services on their appeal website said, "If you do not have a city employee email, you are automatically disqualified from the appeal Fact, provable, admissible in a court of law, municipal, state, and federal. They have the numbers. Okay. On another note, I was told to say, Brian, when you get there, tell them how the mandates impacted your life. I have a question for everybody here. Masked and unmasked, vaccinated and unvaccinated, I want to ask you all a question. How did these mandates not impact your life? Can any of you answer me that question? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Christina Fila, and like many others out there, I'm just one teacher who have become greatly affected by these mandates. Before I begin, I'd like to mention that I've submitted a longer version of what I'm about to say. I beg you all to really read it. Don't just skim through it, but please read it. That virgin advocates not just what I've lost through these mandates, but what these mandates have taken away from our students because they're the ones who are affected the most.
No, keep, you're fabulous. Keep going. We want to hear you. You're wonderful. We, we appreciate you very much.
In order to better understand my story, I must first give you a little background. I had four goals in life, to go to Italy, to be a wife, a mother, and a teacher. Thank you. These mandates took what should have been amazing, happy moments in my life, and they made them into sad and stressful times. In May of 2020, when I was married and became a wife, a week later, I had laparoscopic laser removal surgery for endometriosis, which is one of the many obstacles that my husband and I had to go through in order to become pregnant. It was on my honeymoon that I found out I would become jobless because the news about the teacher mandate broke out. A week after we returned to home, I learned that I was pregnant, and less than a month later, I lost my job because I refused to take an experimental shot that had no effectiveness and a ridiculous amount of negative side effects, many of which directly affected my health. Being a high-risk pregnancy, I applied not for a medical exemption, but for a medical accommodation. This was because I did not fall into the DOE slim category of accepting medical reasons for an exemption. I was also told by numerous doctors that they were not allowed to write an exemption letter for being pregnant. I did, however, get one doctor to agree to work, recommend working remotely or in limited capacity, since the CDC did consider being pregnant a high risk for dangerous forms of COVID. While waiting for the decision on my medical accommodation, I also tried to apply for religious exemption. As Roman Catholic, there are multiple reasons I refuse this injection. When I attempted to submit my exemption in the solar system, I was blocked from applying.
If you could, if you can wrap up, we will read every word of your testimony.
Sure. Um, essentially, I wasn't allowed to apply for religious exemption, um, because by the time I got my denial, the, um, the deadline was over. So I'm sure many people think, why can't you just go to another state and teach? But the simple, the answer is simple, it's impossible. Working as a New York City public school teacher in this system, you get a gift you can't receive anywhere else. As a New York public schools teacher, we're blessed to work with a diverse group of kids, each with their own story, their own needs, and the very way they touch our hearts, leaving a lasting impression. Being a New York public school teacher changes the way you see the world. I'm just one teacher, I'm one staff member, but there are thousands like throughout me.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming today. Uh, next, really appreciate it.
Before I start, I just want to say, I'm reading this on behalf of Josephine Valdez.
Okay.
Um, she had to leave. She was a power professional for the DOE, and she had to leave for...
Go ahead.
Okay. So, Josephine states, "I will not conform to the political corruption that has taken over this nation. I am not here to beg for my job back. I am here to simply state the truth. The fact that we are heading into 2023 and New York is still under unlawful mandates solidifies my distrust in our government. While I sat here, I looked up at the ceiling and read the following quote from Abraham Lincoln, 'A government of the people, by the people, and for the people.' Does that not hold true anymore? I never consented nor supported any of the unconstitutional abusive lockdown procedures and mandates. They helped to increase the destruction of our humanity. Like most abuse victims, we were placed in isolation and held captive in our own homes, deprived access to our daily activities under the guise of public health and safety. Firing me and many others while coercing and threatening us is not about safety, it is about control. My parents came from the Dominican Republic to seek a better life in America. Living here is no longer an American dream, but instead has become the American nightmare. I will never forget what has been done to us, even with the attempts to love-bomb us, just like an abuser does, into thinking we are going back to normal. You cannot undo the humiliation, the division of families, the many children that have committed suicide, the denial of basic human services, the increase of drug and alcohol abuse, businesses destroyed, and trillions of dollars that went to the corporations while we, the people, suffered. Anyone with a moral compass knows that these mandates are wrong and was done to punish the rebels and truth-seekers that can see through the manipulation. This meeting mentions job loss and open vacancies as if many of you in this room didn't accept and consent to that removal of our God-given freedoms. When it comes to this supposed pandemic, the solution to a problem shouldn't cause more problems, unless this was purposely designed to create all the issues that we are facing right now. So many experts and not one in psychology that could call out all of this that has been taken out of the playbook for cycles of abuse? I know the true answer, and I know that some, if not all of you, know it as well.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lauren O'Rourke. I'm a retired NYPD detective from the Fugitive Enforcement Division. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of my former colleagues, who are too afraid to speak out due to retaliation from the upper management of the NYPD, which I'm sure Mayor Adams himself can attest to. Thousands of NYPD officers were mandated to vaccinate or be terminated by October 29th of 2021. The vast majority of those officers had already contracted and recovered from COVID during the height of the pandemic. They contracted it due to poor ventilation and inadequate PPE while they worked. We brought up natural immunity at the time in lieu of... We brought up natural immunity at the time in lieu of vaccination. We were scoffed at, even though thousands of years of science dictates naturally acquiring a disease and recovering from it is the best protection against severe illness from a virus. The CDC and the rest of the experts are finally acknowledging what we have said all along, the exception being the New York City Health Commissioner Ashwin Vasan in his appointed role. The City Council just a few weeks ago passed landmark legislation for women, named the Maternal Health Bill. Hundreds of NYPD officers who were pregnant or undergoing the grueling process of fertility treatments were treated like pariahs. They were forced to choose between their unborn children and putting food on the table. They were forced between taking a shot for a disease that they had already acquired and their own chances at motherhood. Their medical accommodation requests were denied in the cruelest way, as we all watched unvaccinated millionaires play a sport or hold a concert without the same mandate. The fact that the City of New York could not grant these women even a temporary accommodation was just cruel, unscientific, and it was elitist. There are no long-term studies on these vaccines and their effects on reproduction and fertility. As usual, women's health is pushed to the back burner by a man who knows better. The mandate is inhumane, unscientific, and unforgivable. The damage these mandates have caused will not be forgotten quickly. The men and women of this department deserve better. The residents of New York City deserve better. Our student athletes deserve better. Our teachers, firemen, sanitation workers, and nurses deserve better.
Thank you very much.
And the blue-collar workers that keep this city going deserve better.
Thank you very much.
Please end these mandates.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you're next. Sir, you're next.
Hi, yes. My name is Taras Cebidniak. Were you listening closely earlier today? I think that we heard some news from Circle Back Saki, little mini Jen Saki, who is sitting right here. She used the following phrase. She said, "During the pandemic or now." Playback the tape. What does that mean? It means that the mayor's office considers the pandemic to be over. During the pandemic or now. Now is now. It's after the pandemic. A couple of weeks ago, a good friend of mine was given an ultimatum by her NYC employer. "Get the COVID jab or you're fired. Violate your medical and bodily autonomy with experimental injections, or you cannot earn a living." Mayor Eric Adams violated my friend's body. He violated the bodies of thousands, perhaps millions, of New Yorkers. This makes me sick, and it resonates in a terrible human history. It does not matter that Mayor Adams doesn't enforce the private mandate. Reputable employers will never knowingly violate standing law. Therefore, the cruelty and human rights violations remain exactly the same. Why is the worker mandate still on the books if it's not even enforced and there's no emergency? Imagine that politicians ripped away your ability to earn a living if you didn't submit to a medical intervention that you did not want, that can be medically dangerous to you, that you don't need because you already have the disease, that causes heart problems, strokes, blood clots, and suppresses your immunity, that doesn't prevent infection or transmission, that we know has been lied about for over two years by politicians, public health officials, the media, and people who wear white lab coats and call themselves scientists and physicians. The consequences of making your own medical decision is that you'll be unable to pay your rent, to buy food for yourself, to buy food for your children, to pay your bills, to buy gas for your car, for an entire nine months. What I've described is pure cruelty, and I will go so far as to call it pure evil. Anybody who does not stand against this, pure evil. The Nuremberg Code prohibits governments from leveraging coercion and forcing unwanted medical interventions. The code is clear. The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion. I am nearly complete. Thank you. I must put the mayor's COVID hypocrisy on the official record. Barely a day goes by without pictures of Mayor Eric Adams plastered in dense crowds all over social media. No masks anywhere, no social distancing, packed events every single day. There is no emergency anymore in New York City. Mayor Adams is fully injected. He's fully boosted. He's still got COVID, and he likely spread it to others. New York City is the greatest city in the world. We're the people who live here. End the mayor's worker jab mandate. Let New Yorkers work. Stop violating human rights. Look right up there. It says, "Let us have peace." Let us have peace.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Quiet, quiet, because I want to hear the next-- We want to hear the next speaker. Thank you very much.
If possible, I would like to be sworn in, if possible. Is it possible?
Go ahead. You're fine.
Okay. My name is Rowan Rivera. I'm a New York native. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate, taxi drivers in New York City. If they get pulled over and they can't show proof of vaccination, they're going to get ticketed. But I have a challenge for you, Ms. Brewer, and for the council. And thank you for staying, because I spoke to the other two council members, and they just walked right out. Mayor Eric Adams knows who I am. A lot of the council members know who I am. Mr. Eric Adams used to be the borough president of Brooklyn. When he was the borough president of Brooklyn-- Listen carefully, because this is a challenge for you guys. He was letting his staff at Brooklyn Borough Hall get tested while everybody else had a deadline of October 29. I have audio from a staff member that he knows that's been with him for many, many years, working in Brooklyn Borough Hall. I have the audio from her. She worked at Brooklyn Borough Hall, and now she's working at City Hall. And she says she doesn't want to get vaccinated. She said her mother got fired because she refused to get vaccinated, and she had a union. So I have the audio here. You can ignore it, but I have a fellow driver. We got other people here recording it. I reached out to a council member from District 48 months ago. I spoke to her before she left, and she looks at me like I'm an idiot. I myself am not vaccinated. I'm against mandates. I'm against mandates. And this mayor is doing that at Brooklyn Borough Hall. You don't think he's doing it here at City Hall? I have the audio. If you guys don't want to do nothing, if you think I'm some kind of quack, fine, no problem. I'm working with a reporter with the New York Post who's doing a story on it. You can ignore it or do whatever you please. It's all out there now. It's all up to you now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I say that because we want to hear the next panel in person. Thank you very much.
If you hear your name called, please come to the table now. Audrey Denise Rachel Meniscallo, Mayumi Iijima, Bernadette Mejia, Rashad Taylor, and Monica N--
Go ahead, whoever wants to start.
And please just state your name before we begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Audrey Dennis. I want to first thank all those who came to put this common sense hearing together for us to come and express ourselves. And I want to thank all my fellow coworkers in all the different agencies who expressed themselves today, and thank you, committee, for hearing us. Well, I'm a school secretary. I've been in this system over 29 years. And I didn't take the vaccine. It was against my belief. I also did file for religious and medical exemption, and I was denied. And I just want to say, I was out of the country when I first got wind of this notice that we needed to be vaccinated by September. And Michael Mulgrew, who was the UFT president, he is pro-vaccine. And instead of him recusing himself, he didn't. He went on to cheer on vaccination without ratifying a vote with the members. So now this mayor, de Blasio, the former mayor, he too was always pushing for the vaccine with Chachki, Martin Scheinman, who is the arbitrator, who they all colluded to create this mandatory vaccine. And it was at that time when the president of the union, the UFT, decided to have this accommodation. But the accommodation was overseen by people who didn't have any belief, any religious belief. So now we had to file appeals, file court cases. And these appeals are going on with lawyers and judges. And these judges have their hands all dirty because they have stocks, they have shares in all these different vaccines. So I just want to say something too with this "my body, my choice." When we saw the case with Roe versus Wade, we saw where our Michael Mulgrew and others, who refused to allow us to have our own rights, said that he is for "my body, my choice." But yet, whose body was it when they were asking us to vaccinate? Whose body? Was it his body? Is my body his body? All right. So I want to say, as leaders, we need to have people who are courageous. People like, we have this gentleman here, Mr. Holden, and Joanna Arola, and Sister, her name, it's failed me now, and the other lady next to her. We are thankful for people like that because in my community, Leroy Comrie, when he saw me voting in June, he said that it was the unvaccinated who caused him to get vaccinated.
Okay. Can you wrap up, because we want to hear from your colleagues?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to say a few more things to wrap up. I just want to say, with us not working, there should have been a due process, 30-20 process, like was mentioned before, that we all should have been charged. Our union failed us again because they allowed the DOE to take us out of our jobs. We were vested and tenured and needed to get our benefits. I was only just waiting to pay off my student loan. And these people got me and my husband out. My husband had to finally say, "Okay, he's going to retire," just because we needed to get some money coming in. They've devastated all our lives. And so I'm glad to let this go out because Mayor Eric Adams did not speak with us. He went on doing the same thing de Blasio did. Either you take the jab or no paycheck.
Thank you very much. I want to hear from the next speaker. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Mayumi Iijima. I thank you for the opportunity for me to speak here. I'm here because I'm concerned about the vaccine mandate that has affected thousands of people, including my family. And also, I've seen so many people, the jobs have been terminated, as you have already heard. I came here from Japan as an adult because New York City was my dream city. The United States, a great country. I was so happy to be here until the pandemic happened. I thought New York City was the greatest city in the world, but my conception, my view, has completely changed since the pandemic. After the pandemic happened, the lockdown, thousands of small businesses were killed. But I thought it's going to be just temporarily, okay? And the vaccine came. I made my personal medical choice because an experimental vaccine, I thought it's not going to take it. At least I was going to see how it works. And vaccine mandate came. I couldn't go to a restaurant. I was excluded from dining restaurants, gyms, so you name it. But I thought it's going to pass temporarily. And December last year, Mayor de Blasio then imposed a vaccine mandate for employer, private employer. And that actually shocked me, that the United States, New York City, has to love freedom. What happened to this country? What happened? I came here for freedom, for any better opportunities. What happened to this country? I'm so disappointed. And this-- Okay. And I thought it's going to be temporarily, and March, I know the professional athletes exempted. Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. So I thought, okay, vaccine mandate is going to finally be lifted. And CDC guidelines came. And what happened? Nothing. New York City has a vaccine mandate for all employees and college students. Okay, sorry. So I just demand, I just want the vaccine mandate to be lifted at all costs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Next.
Hi again. So I'm speaking on behalf of Rachel, and just like myself, Rachel was with the Department of Education, and she was terminated in April of this year. She was on hold. She was on leave without pay. They had her in limbo. And from what I understand, with those who are on leave without pay, they were not able to go and find another job, and they were never able to apply for unemployment, which makes it different from me. You know, we all have different stories. But as far as with the Department of Education, and even if we have a shortage in the Department of Education, we have so many seasoned teachers. We have so many veteran, even power professionals, people that want to do the job, but they were let go. So now you have a shortage, and you have so many people. All they have to do is lift it. All they have to do is lift the mandates and allow these people to come back to work, those that want to come back to work. There are some, myself included and a few others that I know personally, that they don't even want to go back, even if you do lift the mandates. The trauma, the PTSD, honestly, we all have suffered some form of PTSD, CPST, complex PTSD. We will never be able to truly heal from what has happened because we've been humiliated, discarded. For those who have taken it because they thought that was the only choice that they had, now they will forever be maimed. They will never go back to the city. But the ones who are dedicated, the ones who took their body into their hands and made their choice their own, if you lift these mandates, they will gladly come back and serve the city that they love so much. But then there has to be the incentive, and what will happen as far as an apology? Back pay. There has to be some kind of incentive or something that says, "You know what? We did you wrong, and we are responsible. We're going to take accountability for it." Give them back back pay and give them whatever it is that they desire. I don't care if it's unlimited PTO, whatever they deserve. Because the city, New York City, is nothing without the people. You guys don't have your seats unless we vote.
Thank you very much. Next, sir.
My name is Rashad Taylor. I was a firefighter in the Bronx for six years. I worked at ladder 61, and I was born and raised in the Bronx. I'm here because I feel it in my soul that there is something I need to confront and take care of. I ask for you to truly open your ears to listen and open your heart to feel. I believe we are living in fear, and that fear has many disguises. I fooled myself into thinking I wasn't and that I was being strong, but I was. I was living in fear. I was placed on leave without pay in October, right after having a newborn daughter. And it's been terrible, honestly. But I was put on leave without pay for five months, and I was terminated in February. I never thought I would have to look for another job again. I loved my job. I was told, and I believed, that it was the best job in the world. I had tremendous respect for it, but it slowly diminished when they started persecuting their members and disposed of them like a number for standing up for themselves. The mayor, city, and the fire department arbitrarily made decisions for what's convenient for them at the expense of others' livelihoods that has no scientific basis at all. I was slapped in the face with a rehiring letter in June. And I don't care if I go back or not, because it's bigger than any job. I don't care about what you choose to label yourself with or identify as. We are all humans first. Before I'm a firefighter, I am a human first. Pretty much, all labels and categories are divisive constructs. We are not separate. We are all one. Stand for what's objectively right. Policies and mandates are not laws, if you guys didn't know. There is only one law, and that is natural law, and that comes from our Creator, God. Anything that conflicts with that is null and void. Rights can never be bought, sold, given, or taken away. We are all inherently sovereign beings, and we have been forced this illusion that are contrary to those facts about our rights. I just have one more point. Has this ever been about health? Really think about all the events that has transpired and the stories we are led to believe that has caused fear, chaos, division, and a lot of aspects of our lives. For what? It is unjustifiable. My health is no one's responsibility but my own. Everyone's health is their responsibility, and I owe nothing to them but honorable due regard based on objective facts, because there's no scientific facts about any of this. I'll leave this by asking everyone to embody truth, love, light, justice, freedom, and peace. And I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Shh. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Monica. And I just wanted to say, I didn't lose my job due to the mandates, like so many people here. I lost my job because it shut down due to lockdowns. But I'm seeing the effects every day of what these mandates have been doing to everybody. And it's actually been hard for me to find a new job because of these mandates, and it's been over a year. I refuse to get vaccinated because it is "my body, my choice", and I don't need any other reason than that. All you have to do is look around to other states to know that these mandates are not about being necessary to keep us safe, and they're the reason that everybody is jobless in New York and fleeing New York to go to places like freedom-loving Florida, who doesn't have mandates. I heard some of you asking for solutions to the large number of unemployment in New York City, and the solution is simple. Remove the mandates, period, for all companies, not just city jobs, but for the whole city. And how about using the funds that were wasted on advertising for these vaccines and ads-- for people to comply with masking, et cetera, on job trainings instead? Use the funds for lowering crime in the city, like hiring more NYPD and removing their mandates as well, so that people actually want to stop leaving and stop being scared to be here? And maybe use some of that money also to help businesses stay open and/or reopen the ones that couldn't survive the plandemic, I mean, the pandemic. New York City is suffering, and it will only get worse if something isn't done now. Use your voices, I'm imploring you, not just as our public servants, but also as fellow New Yorkers, to fix what has been done to all of us.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Bernadette Mejia. I am a Hispanic single mother who had worked for the fire department. For over 22 years, I was a female firefighter. I was forced to retire after being threatened that I would lose my job and my pension if I would not get vaccinated. I was denied a religious exemption. My right to privacy of medical information was violated by the fire department, and I was outcast and alienated from the coworkers I had worked with for so many years because of my right to medical choice were being violated, the very freedom this country stands for. And I knew this was wrong. This was not just my job, my lifelong career was being taken. It seemed like in the blink of an eye, I'm still in disbelief that this has happened. I worked during 9/11, I worked during Hurricane Sandy, and I worked during the most recent disaster of COVID-19. I would just like to remind everyone what firefighters and many city workers experienced during that time. While working throughout the pandemic tirelessly every other day at risk to my health and safety, and the risk of contaminating family, family members without the appropriate protective equipment, because even the fire department of the city of New York did not have adequate resources for protection of its workers, while being exposed to coworkers who had tested positive for COVID-19 and were told by the fire department to report to duty. And while personally exposed at home, who tested, with my fiance, who tested positive, had an active cough and fever, and I was still told to report to work for duty, at the risk of countless further contaminations, all while being told I was essential. I was an essential worker. I was essential until my civil rights were violated, my right to choose, my body, my choice. I was essential until the vaccine mandate. I ask you now, with all of the new data concerning vaccine and its efficacy, new treatment availability, the information of transmission, as well as no differentiation between vaccinated and unvaccinated, why are the leaders of this city still imposing a vaccine mandate? My future stability was taken from me, the future of a stable pension to provide for my family is now gone. Return all workers who were affected and punished for their right to a medical choice. Restore justice to a civil rights violation that was imposed by failed city leaders. End this vaccine mandate.
Can you wrap up? Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We got to keep moving because we have, ma'am, if you don't mind, we have some.
Just one thing, the PR code, the problem code, many of us were not working.
Yeah, we know that.
There was a code that was placed on our record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now call up the next panel. If you hear your name called, please come up now. Imoya Monroque, Gabriel Dalte, Daniel, Daniel Holover, Tim Heaton, Mandel Bailey, Akila Norris. We'll call up a few more names. Paul Schwelt, Thomas Olson, Sophie Medina, Robert Banome, and Catherine Diab.
So is there anybody in the audience who signed up who has not spoken, who've signed up? Well, they can hear me. Oh, they're coming down. Okay. Thank you. If there's anybody whose name has been called, please feel free to join us at the table. And if there's anybody who's been signed up but hasn't been called, please join us. Go ahead and start, please.
My name is Imoya Monroque. I have been in New York for many years, a city that I love. I've worked as an actor, and I'm being discriminated against since the mandates. There are many actors who work background work, or who work principal work, or who work in theater. I'm also going to speak on behalf of artists that the city claims are an essential part of the city. They're the ones who entertain, whether comedy or whatever, to get people to survive this pandemic mentally, whether they were watching TV or otherwise. We're not able to work those who are unvaccinated. We're asked, those who are unvaccinated, we're asking that the city investigate, out the union, the Screen Actors Guild, along with other unions, because I listened today and I realized the union is a roadblock, it's, it's a loophole, it's all of that. They're claiming to represent us, but they're not. So looking at what the union is doing will be very important. I'm about to lose my health insurance that I had accumulated before because I worked right after the vaccine. Mayor Eric Adams teased us and gave us hope by saying that entertainers and sportspeople would get exemptions. Who got the exemptions? The people with the fat bank accounts. Many of us do not have that, and we have had to turn to the city, and it's an expense on the city to pay rent, to pay, to give food stamps, and all of these things, which also puts a strain on having workers. I have friends who work in the system who've lost their jobs as well. Then the food stamp people have to go for food stamp when the city is not paying them. In the meantime, that they're, they're asking for exemptions, they're not getting it, they're entitled to it, and there is no payment while they wait. And I listened to the lady who was circling, and circling, and circling the globe. She has a job, and she should lose that job. So that's what I want to say. My body is my choice for abortion. My body, my body is my choice for sex reassignment if I choose, and the city will pay for it. But my body is not my choice for what I don't want to put in it and participate in an experiment, the great experiment that is happening, that is a clinical trial. I did not sign up for it.
All right, thank you.
And I need to be compensated for it. I'm losing pension, I'm losing insurance, I'm losing income, and the city cannot adequately provide what I need to survive. Thank God I do not have a kid.
Thank you.
I really feel it for these other people.
Thank you very much. I want to hear from the next speaker. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danny Holkower. I was a, I worked for the New York City Department of Sanitation. I was terminated for refusing to take the vaccine. I think the hardest part of this is the fact that we could have actually ended all this. My department could have done it, but our union said to us the mandates weren't going to happen, and then it went from the union, they went from, it's not going to happen, they can't do that to you, to, oh, just take it, just take it. It was disgusting, the way that they handled it, and it was disgusting the way the city handled it, because we don't even work around the public. You see us work, and you don't come running up to us. I mean, it's not like we're interacting with people all day long, and there weren't even that many of us that the union would have had to fight for, but they just didn't bother. And the worst of this is the fact that I begged my guys, I said, listen, fight this now, whether or not you're going to take it, whatever you believe in it, fight for it now, get, end this. Do not let them do this to you. Why? Because they're going to step up next and take something else from you. And just yesterday morning, the MLC voted to slash 12-126 of the city admin code, which is the city subsidizing the health care for both retirees and current workers. So everybody is pretty much affected by this. And then what's going to happen is, is they're going to force you onto a single payer, for-profit health service, that is not going to benefit anybody but them. And this is going to go before the city council soon, and, and nobody knows about this. I go, I talk to my guys, nobody knows. We went to our union meeting yesterday to, to, to attack, to confront Harry, and these guys, and there's no shop stewards there. No, I had information to give to these shop stewards, nobody's there. Nobody knows what's happening. These guys are living in a tunnel vision, I'm just going to retire and I'm out of here? Well, good luck with that, because the minute you try to go down to Florida and your health care service is gone, you're not going to have any options. You're going to be coming up to New York every time. You can still get GHI in Florida, there's still places to go. It's not going to work. If the city has a specific plan just for everybody, that's going to be for their benefit only.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, next.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Dalmau. I worked for the Department of Sanitation for about five years. I remember feeling proud when I first got the job. I'm a welder. Welding on garbage trucks is not glamorous at all. A lot of the city jobs that we take and that we do are not glamorous, but we show up every day, even during a pandemic. Nurses, firefighters, teachers, EMTs, police, you name it. We were there, we were good enough then, we should be good enough now. Uh, in April of 2020, my mother Cynthia, God bless her soul, she passed away. I took my four days bereavement, and I went back to work. I, I went back to work every single day during, during the pandemic. When my mother passed away, took my four days, I went back to work. It's not because I'm an outstanding employee or anything like that, it's because it's my job, that's what I chose to do. And I said, I'd rather be at work, keeping my mind busy, and doing some, at least for the city, in my own little, small way to help out, rather than be at home going crazy. Um, we're not where we were before. These things don't make sense, the mandates don't make sense, well, people are hurting out there, people are losing their jobs, their homes. All the people that we called on, when, when we're in trouble, police, firefighters, EMT, nurses, schoolteachers, all those people, they were good enough then, but they're not good enough now. How does that make any sense? Um, all I got to say is that, end the mandates. It's unconstitutional, it's illegal, and it's just downright not human, the way that we've been treating people. We got treated like yesterday's newspaper. We got treated like the trash that we're, that we helped to take out all the time. And the same with a whole bunch of other people in this city. This great city that we love, that we all signed up to take care of, that we all are a part of, we need to be less divisive and more inclusive, and get everybody back to what they do, to what they do best, because you cannot replace the amount of experience that these people have with new hires. It just, it doesn't work that way. You, ma'am, you said you've been around for a long time, uh, as.
Long time.
Long time. You could probably attest to what experience means and what it matters.
I know, I know, I appreciate it, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Tim Heaton. I was a lieutenant in the FDNY until I was terminated on July 6th, 33 days shy of celebrating my 23rd year. I had been on LWOP since November 1st, having filed a religious exemption in October. I grew up in Milltown, Pennsylvania, which is near Hershey. I started as a volunteer in my local fire departments. FDNY guys would come out and teach classes, and got me interested in working here. I left the Washington DC Fire Department in 1999 to pursue my dream of being a New York City fireman. Sadly, that dream is taking a most serious turn in the past two years. In March of 2020, I was still a fireman at Engine 69 in Harlem. We were performing CPR on a daily basis, often several times per day. I was promoted to lieutenant in May of 2020, and every firehouse I worked in at, in Lower Manhattan, had numerous members out for COVID. It was obvious, there was no way I had not been exposed to COVID, and whatever I was doing was working. To say that we've been failed by those in leadership would be a huge understatement. From those that once banged pots and cheered at 7:00 PM, to unions that ignored sizable factions of their membership who did not want nor need the vaccine, to the leaders of the fire department itself, staff chiefs, staff chiefs who went along with the coercion, the previous commissioner's abhorrent remarks, essentially in calling us all scumbags, to the current one who continues to allow members to be terminated for not getting a vaccine that obviously does not do what they said it would. We have seen failed, what failed leadership is. It continues on an almost daily basis, on an almost daily basis from Mayor Marie Antoinette's office, as he exempts athletes and entertainers, but decrees to the people who actually live and work in this city, let them eat cake. We are here asking for your help. We don't need heroes, there are thousands of heroes in the FDNY who do heroic things on a daily basis. What we need is someone in leadership to stand up for us, to champion us and our righteous cause, and to simply allow all of us to do what we have been doing long before the last two years inexplicably altered our lives and our careers. Let us work.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Catherine Diab. I'm a New York City tenured teacher. I worked during 2020, 21, in person, and in addition to painting with my students, I also did health screenings. Um, I luckily for myself received a health exemption. However, we lost two teachers in my school because of these mandates. I have numerous friends that are unemployed or underemployed because of these mandates that are on the brink of homelessness, who I am helping right now financially, since I still am working. And, um, I have also many colleagues and friends and family members who sadly were coerced into receiving these experimental, illegal injections, because they're EUAs, and it's not legal to force people to receive them as a condition for employment. Um, people have to sign a consent form to be part of a clinical trial, and the people I know did not want this, they felt that they had to have it to maintain their employment. Um, I, I'm very well versed, and I do my research, but I don't have to, because I know people, friends, neighbors, family members who've had side effects ranging from vertigo to headaches that kept them in bed for a week. I've seen people staggering down the street, and because it's that kind of neighborhood, I've asked them, what's wrong? And they said, I just got my second dose of Pfizer, and I, I have vertigo. I've seen two people in that condition. So I, I've seen, you know, many side effects, and the common denominator is, denominator, excuse me, is that they've received these shots. And, okay, I'm going to stop in one minute. I cannot be silent anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'd like to hear from the last panel, if you don't mind, the people right behind you. Thank you so much.
Add one thing. Uh, I also apply for a religious exemption, and I work with a partner at DSNY. He's working right now, and I'm not.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead with whomever would like to begin.
Good afternoon, my name is Sophie Medina. I was born and raised here and have lived here my entire life, except for my time in the Marines. This is my family. Tommy and I are firefighters on forced leave without pay because we didn't take a shot that proved to be useless at best and harmful at worst. Five firefighters are suddenly dead after the vaccine mandates, and many others are quietly suffering with adverse reactions, and they're afraid to speak out publicly. We both worked throughout the, the worst of the pandemic. We worked without proper protective equipment, and we both acquired natural immunity. We went from essential to expendable, and no one seems to care, which is ironic if you remember the banging of the pots and pans at 7:00 PM every night. My face was used many times by the FDNY to recruit and promote diversity by the FDNY. I was here in this, these chambers, I remember your face, when I was testifying about the terrible treatment of certain women on this job. But since these mandates, and, and the FDNY's problems to recruit and retain women like myself, since the mandates, we have been shunned from our place of work and from society in New York City. But there were no vaccine mandates to ride the trains and buses, where vaccinated and unvaccinated were side by side this whole time. Divisive messaging from the top down has relegated my family and I, and many others like me, to become second-class citizens in our own city. We've worked in public service our whole lives. Tommy in sanitation before this, myself as a lifeguard, as a teenager, a Marine before, and a firefighter now. Being a firefighter is not just a job for any of us, it's a vocation, truly a calling that takes a certain type of person who's both tough and compassionate. It's a dedication to serve when bad things happen, and to help people on their worst days and their most vulnerable moments. We've responded to victims of assault, I've translated between patients and advanced medical providers, and we've operated at fires with little regard for our own safety and lives.
She can take my two minutes over.
Tommy has been twice decorated by the FDNY for going above and beyond at fires, one of them during the pandemic, no less. We've never asked anyone's vaccination status when providing help when called. These mandates have taken away our ability to provide for our family. It is still impossible to find work in this city, even after the shift from the CDC. The constant strain and pressure during this time has been really hard for my family and I. Years of hard work and saved money for our future have gone down the drain and will affect us on a generational level, as it's taking away from our children and their future, and it's taking away from our parents, who, who we've been preparing to care for in their golden years. Our kids were forced out of their swimming classes and out of public schools since we won't subject them to participate in a system where their parents aren't allowed. Instead of recognizing that our stance was indeed right, we are still being punished by the city of New York. Our religious exemptions were denied, and our medical exemptions are being sat on by the very people who are supposed to be preserving and fighting for our rights. There's no state of emergency, and... There's no state of emergency and the city is bleeding out money trying to recruit while many of us are out in the cold wanting to work and the city is losing valuable years of expertise. City jobs used to be coveted for providing job stability and now no one wants these jobs because they have witnessed the disrespect to all the city workers who chose to stand up for themselves. Never forget that first responders were told the air was safe to breathe after 9/11. And never forget that we were told that this crap was safe and effective and here we are now. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you to the family for being here. Thank you for, I don't know who goes next, you, sir.
Yeah, I can go next. My name is Bobby Benomi. I'm an eight-year FDNY firefighter veteran. I'm the president of a charity called Humble Heroes of FDNY. It's comprised all of volunteers. We dress up as superheroes and we visit pediatric burn centers and cancer centers around the country to lift the spirits of sick kids. I'm the most, I'm the most recent winner of the Patrick J. Murphy Award, an award that goes to the top firefighter, a police officer that's done the most for the community on and off the clock. I'm currently on leave without pay for eight months. I have fallen uncomfortably into debt despite receiving financial aid from friends and family. I'm engaged, but we've canceled all wedding plans until we can get back on our feet financially. And given the new CDC guidelines, I just want to get back to work. I just ask that we get back, put back to work. Thank you for your time and consideration, what this matters.
Thank you very much.
Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Tom LaPaula. I've been a member of the fire department for the past 38 years, achieving the rank of battalion chief. But unfortunately, my career came to an abrupt end last year when the former mayor arbitrarily decided to implement a mandate that all New York City employees receive an experimental gene therapy as I was forced to retire. No need for me to explain why I did not take this experimental shot. Suffice it to say, I'm a believer in informed consent. I'm here today to give my unequivocal support to the brave men and women of the fire department, the NYPD, the sanitation workers, teachers, and any other municipal employee who may have lost their jobs because of this unjust mandate or who still remain on leave without pay. I've also recognized the potential harm that this mandate may have already caused each agency as a result of a sudden departure of many of its members in both leadership and the rank and file. As a leader, I realized that one of my immediate responsibilities was to identify and inspire the future leaders of the organization. Now, in this past year, I've watched many new leaders come into their own, some of whom you've already listened to today, all right? Which under normal conditions would have prompted me to encourage these members to step into the breach and fill the void left by the natural attrition process. But sadly, these potential leaders have now either been terminated or they still remain on leave without pay. The void created by these terminations and the forced early retirements of many others is irmeasurable as these members took with them all their experiences and their knowledge, that it may be years before these agencies return to what we used to call "normal." By continuing to keep these talented workforce, this talented workforce out of work because they chose not to be coerced into receiving this jab does nothing to keep people safe. But it does prevent them providing the services that they've been trained to do and that training, all at a cost to the taxpayer. Every one of these people has been negatively impacted by this mandate, showed up for work throughout the pandemic and at great personal risk, not only to themselves but to their families as well. All they are asking for is simply to return to work so they too can provide for their families, just like the Mets, the Yankees, the Knicks, and the Nets. I don't believe that's too much to ask. And I do recognize that it may be a difficult political decision for the mayor to rescind this unnecessary mandate at this time. But hey, he was a New York City police captain and I'm quite sure his honor has the moral courage to put aside all politics for a moment and simply do the right thing. Thank you very much and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Paul Schweit. I'm a firefighter for seven years with the FDNY. There's not much I can say that can sum up every single testimony that was given here today, but I do hope that it resonates with all the council members. And I do hope that a lot of the council members come back and look at the testimony and read them because our stories can never give you insight to what we endured these past, this past year. I pride myself as a Marine and a firefighter to be strong at hard times and stand up when standing's hard and even when I stand alone. But this past year, I had a son. And my son gave me the strength to do what was right in my heart. And I hope that the council members can find it in their heart to listen to these testimonies, hear the struggles that we have gone through. This is not just about loss of pay. This is not about even vaccines. This is about enduring pain and suffering, which as humans we can all attest to. We need relief. And the council members that have helped us through this process, they need your help. We need the mayor's help. And when we're up here pleading for our lives, for our families, for future generations, it's not to take a political stance, it's to show you that suffering is real and it's almost unbearable at times. But the men and women in this, in this chamber, the testimonies that you have heard, are family and this is what New York City is about, right here. I don't know if you've ever heard in this chamber the amount of camaraderie and support ever before than in this testimony right now. So please take that to heart, understand that we need you to sign on to the other council members' plea for help to talk to the mayor to please release these mandates. Help us through this struggle to get back to work, not only for ourselves either, but for future generations and for this city to get back on its feet.
I want to say thank you for the last in-person person to speak. You did a great summary and we're glad that you were the closer. And thank you very much to everyone. We're going to go now to the final persons on the Zoom. Thank you very much, sir. Councilmember Holden has a question, go ahead.
I just want to say, before, you know, this has been probably the toughest hearing to sit through as a council member. I've been on for almost five years now in the council. And I really feel, especially the first responders who did their jobs, you guys are the salt of the earth and you should not have been treated this way. And the city will make it up to you. I guarantee that the mayor will come, you know, come to the conclusion that we can't keep these mandates. I just feel that he's, he's a good man. We met with him. I think if he saw this testimony, like right where I'm sitting, he would tomorrow change that and just do away with the mandates. But this is heartbreaking, this hearing. And I just hope everyone out there listens, you know, watches this. And we, I don't know how much, how many press reporters are here, but this word has to get out and this has to be done because it's not fair. It's not right, you all went through the pandemic like us, but you were on the front lines. And you guys are heroes. And we shouldn't treat our heroes, we shouldn't kick them in the head and say goodbye like that, especially with what you've been through. So I admire you all, you're patriots. And I stand with you and I'll do whatever I can to convince the mayor because he can do this, he can lift it tomorrow and we have to convince him. But thank you all for your testimony, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're now going to go, because there's still people on the Zoom, thank you.
I'd now like to welcome Tabitha Forte to testify, followed by Maureen Hurley and then Selly Batista. Tabitha Forte, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Tabitha, if you can hear us, you may begin. We'll move on now to Maura Healy.
Time starts now.
Excuse me, Maureen Hurley.
Time starts now.
Hi, I just have two questions and they're for the mayor. What signs is the mayor following and the Department of Health? And why do they not recognize natural immunity? Thank you, that was it.
Thank you.
Selly Batista.
Time starts now.
Hello, hello everyone. Thank you for having me and thank you, Mr. Holden, for your, those words that you said. Very touching. My name is Selly, I am a sergeant of police. I'm still employed with the New York City Police Department. I also have a master's degree in human resource management and have studied employment law. And this topic I know very well about because I've studied it. I'm here, it's my First Amendment right to be here with you all as an individual. So let me just fast forward, I was denied my religious exemption. I later on was able to find a lawyer after several attempts and I found one during that gridlock of finding an attorney. I found one three days before I had to submit my appeal and I submitted it. After that, I got admitted, like a week later, I was admitted in the hospital with chest pains, was put out from work for two and a half weeks. Okay, I had to deal with lost friendships, lost partnerships. So you could just imagine the amount of stress for the past 10 to 12 months, right? It's basically illegal pain and suffering, okay? You've seen all the testimonies, it's all illegal pain and suffering. So July, I won and I was approved, but thousands have been denied. So one would assume, I'm a Roman Catholic, one would assume that at a legal standpoint, at this point, at a legal standpoint, everyone else should be similarly situated. If I was approved, everyone else should be similarly situated. But that's not the case. So I'm going to say, I'm going to, I'm going to say something, you know? My lawyer did ask me, she goes, I have a question for you. Were you working inside or were you out there working on the streets? I said, no, I actually work in New York City transit. So it's a lot more hectic, more people to deal with on a constant basis. Then she goes, oh, because I have a lot of my clients getting disapproved, okay?
Can you wrap up, I'm sorry, thank you.
I just want to end with this, religious interrogation is not up to the government, okay? Religious interrogation is not up to the government. It's not for you guys to do, you're not divine. You don't have the power that God has to judge anyone. I just want to leave that with that statement, okay? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, next.
Next we'll hear from Emily Zapantis, then Laura Hoffman, then Iliana Gordon, then Karen Rosado. Emily Zapantis, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, hi, good afternoon. I'd like to thank all the council members that are so valiantly sitting there listening to all of us today, thank you. I am a former New York City school administrator and assistant principal for 17 years and an educator for 23 years in the city of New York before I was terminated. I'm also part of the Educators for Freedom and I am also one of the ones that worked during the 2020, 2021 year when everybody stayed home because of their body mass index and their body fat content. I went into work every single day so that I can advocate for my beautiful students and my parents and the community in Jamaica, Queens that I have been a part of for so many years. It's egregious what they have done to us and more importantly, to the economy of New York City that I have been a member of for almost 56 years of my life as I was born and bred in Queens, New York. You want the best workers, you had the best workers. Educated, highly educated people, personally, three diplomas and three certifications in education myself. It's egregious that I had to sit there and listen to the woman in the green dress, the circle back D-class woman, to lie in front of the council people there today. We were not on payroll as we waited and waited to be accepted by the citywide panel and the determination of whether our religious exemptions was going to be accepted or not and our accommodations who was denied four times in a row. But it's okay. The worst part of it all for me, it's not the money that's been lost even though I was making more than the principal as an assistant principal because I had more seniority. The worst part of it for me was that my religion was being questioned as a Sunday school teacher. That was the worst part of it. And about 12 years ago, I found myself sitting.
Can you wrap up, I'm sorry, can you wrap up, thank you.
I, I'm sorry.
Can you wrap up? Because we've got more speakers.
I found myself sitting at the Queens Museum with about five to six of my teachers. And we learned about the Flushing Remonstrance that day because we were doing professional development. And the Flushing Remonstrance, for all those people that don't know, really should look it up, was the precursor to the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights for religious freedom. And it all started in Flushing, Queens.
We need to wrap up, we need to wrap up, okay?
Yeah, it all started.
Ma'am, we need to wrap up because we have more speakers to go, all right? Thank you.
But I just want to, thank you, I just want to let everybody know that they should look up the Flushing Remonstrance, which was the precursor.
Thank you very much.
I'd now like to welcome Laura Hoffman to testify and then Iliana Gordon and then Karen Rosado. Laura Hoffman, you may begin.
Your time will begin.
Hi, first of all, I want to work. In January 2022, I was fired from my job of 10 years following an unpaid involuntary leave of absence due to the COVID vaccine mandates and my firmly held religious beliefs. I was tossed aside like human garbage after being a dedicated worker of 10 years. The unfair treatment negated the decades of volunteer community work that I have done alongside my former employer and in the Greenpoint community on multiple environmental waterfront parks and housing issues. I've testified many, many times before the New York City Council regarding those issues. Never would I have ever thought that I'd be testifying about my right to work, my freedom of religion, or having control over what to put in my body, but here I am. My income and my ability to get another job were taken away and it was needless since I've had natural antibodies since March, since March 2020 following being sick with COVID. Given my community-based knowledge about environmentally linked diseases and knowledge about my own autoimmune diseases, I knew it was a strong possibility that these antibodies would serve to protect me from COVID in the future. And now the CDC is finally catching up, acknowledging what many people already knew. What hurts the most is that I truly loved my job, my coworkers, my clients, and I'm still friends with many of my coworkers and clients who've sought me out on social media. I worked as a housing counselor in a respected non-for-profit community organization under contract with HPD as a housing counselor, housing counseling agency. As an essential worker, I worked both in the office and remotely serving clients during the heart of the pandemic. I made wellness calls to seniors in an effort to prevent them from feeling isolated. The same organization that did this work is the one that fired me for who I am and isolated me, a senior with medical issues.
Thank, if you could wrap up, thank you.
Basically, the mandates have severely harmed me, harmed the way that I interact with the community. I refuse to even eat out in establishments that did not push back against the mandate.
Thank you.
And it's to the point where I myself, after fighting for environmental issues in this community for decades, I'm thinking about moving out of New York myself.
Thank you very much. One of the council members has a question, if you could just hold on a minute, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I really just want to say thank you to Chairwoman Del Rosa and to Chairwoman Gail Brewer because they're worth a good round of applause. Because before today, people who were on leave without pay or people who did not get granted their leave or get granted their appeals were just that, words to many. granted their leave or get granted their appeals were just that, words to many people. But today, now, because of their ability to have you come and testify, we now have faces to make, to align with those needs. And anyone, anyone who can look in your faces and tell you that you are wrong, there's something wrong with them. There shouldn't be just eight of us signing on a letter. There shouldn't be just eight of us standing with you out front on the steps of City Hall. There should be 51 of us. Because in this city council, we fight for equality, gender equality, medical equality, equality for those whose civil rights have been denied. And I've heard all of that here today. So this needs to be a body of 51, not just eight voices or 10 voices, a body of 51 to meet with the mayor again and say to him, we know you're open to this, but we're working together to make sure that justice and racism and inequity is addressed. Because this is a room of diversity and of the people who elected us to protect them. And that's not what's happening here. So thank you for your courage and thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the next. That was great, but I want to hear the people on the Zoom. Go ahead.
Next, we'll hear from Iliana Gordon, then Karen Rosado, then Dominic Francois, and then Tabitha Forte. Iliana Gordon, you may begin when ready.
Your time will begin.
Hi. I'm Iliana Gordon. I'm a police dispatcher, police operator with 911. And I'm here basically because of the horrible conditions that we are meant to work with on a constant basis. To top it off, we're paid a very low wage. That's a low salary. The starting salary is 39 and it tops off at, I think, at 56, 57. And virtually this whole summer, the New York City is running a sweatshop. That's basically what it is, a sweatshop. And if it was any other company, any other organization in the city would be shut down. But the city council, I'm just letting you guys know that you guys are running a sweatshop, right? Who wants to, you guys are there contemplating what else can be done, I mean, why people aren't working in the city? People aren't working, especially at my job, because they're always harmed, because nobody wants to make $39,000 annually for, as a dispatcher. I mean, we do a lot of work. We cover 77 precincts, nine transit bureaus, right? And what, seven PSAs? But don't quote me on that. And 39,000? 50, it tops off at 56? Come on. I think you guys can do better than a 2% raise annually, right? But what I want you guys to do, and I'm imploring you guys, the city, all the city council members, because in the past, I've written to every, almost every member of the city's council's public safety committee. I've written to the former House Speaker Corey Johnson. I've written to this present Speaker of the House and nothing has ever happened. Like, what is the sense of me writing to you guys if you guys aren't even responding how I want you guys to respond? Like, what is the whole purpose of this whole democracy, right? I want you guys to come and visit the center, right? On all tours, three tours, on all tours possible, right? And you come and you sit there and you tell me if that's what you think we deserve. Because at this point, this isn't making any sense and it's unfair.
Can you wrap up?
It's 2022.
Can you wrap up? Thank you.
It's 2022 and we are the lowest paid dispatchers in the tri-state area.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
A lot of operators make more money than us for all we do for the New York City Police Department, the largest police department in the world.
Thank you very much.
You guys should do better.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd now like to call on Karen Rosado and then Dominic Francois and then Tabitha Forte. Karen Rosado.
Your time will begin.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Karen Rosado. I'm a paramedic who was terminated from SEOI. I've come here today hoping that you understand the effects mandates have caused myself and many others like me. You see, I grew up in the foster care system and had a job since I was in the fifth grade. I was a kid, but I knew that I wanted more out of life and I wanted to be in a position to help others in any capacity. And when the opportunity opened for me to become a paramedic for the SEOI, I seized it. I enjoyed helping people every day and twice in my career, I've met young people in the foster care system who thought they wouldn't amount to anything or have a career like mine in SEOI, until I shared my story with them. And I immediately saw hope in their eyes, that they now have someone to relate to and it's proof that if they push hard enough, they can too make it. I now feel like that kid in foster care. Who feels like they have everything stacked against them. I cannot get a job within New York City with the skills that I have. I now don't know where my next paycheck will come from. I've worked throughout the pandemic and while it may seem like a broken record to say we were praised one day and forgotten the next, it is heartbreakingly true. Throughout the pandemic, we were seeing and experiencing some of the worst days in our career, working more hours than normal with the cold volumes at an all-time high. It was mentally, emotionally, and physically draining, but we showed up every day. To invade our private medical history and choices and terminate us over the vaccine that has carve-outs for athletes or entertainers because they boost the economy has nothing to do with science. You see, I now can get a job playing as a paramedic on TV, but I can't use my actual skills that I was trained for and have 10 years' experience on the community that actually needs it. Where's the logic in that? The CDC finally acknowledges unvaccinated with previous exposure hold the same immunity as the vaccinated. So why is it the CDC following that science? Why can't we acknowledge natural immunity?
Time's expired.
I'm not a threat to anyone. 30 more seconds.
Thank you.
I'm not a threat to anyone and I hope you will stand with us and drop these carve-outs and allow us to stand with our brothers and sisters against keeping our safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd now like to call on Dominic Francois, followed by Tabitha Forte. Dominic Francois, you may begin when ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Your time will begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Dominic Francois. I am still a New York City Police Department officer until next Friday, when my tenure is expected to end due to the COVID vaccine mandate. And I was forced to submit my paperwork for vested retirement, which was not my intention. And I'm hoping that this turns around so that I can continue my career and retire from the city of New York. I think we're at an impasse right now where we have heard and allowed individuals who just wanted to be heard and given the opportunity to say, this is not for me. I appreciate the offer, but I'm not going to do this. The vaccine was something that was forced on people in the city who have to work here or have to work in the city. And I think it's now we're at an impasse where we're starting to hear those voices that were not heard, especially during those reasonable accommodation request periods. Now we're hearing those voices say something and say, well, this is not right. This is why it's not right. And this is why I feel I should be given the reasonable accommodation. We're at an impasse to right the wrongs that we've experienced for the last two and a half years, going on three years. This is an opportunity for the city to say, okay, we've got to start to rebuild. We've got to start making next steps to get past whatever COVID is and whatever it's going to be for the city in the future. But it has to start at some point. It really does have to start at some point. So people like Selly Batista, Peter, like Peter Kandynov, Michael Caine, thank you for being the face of this movement, for being the drive that inspires so many people to just keep pushing and doing what they feel is best for their families, for themselves, so they can just do what they've always done, which is provide. Thank you for this opportunity. Be safe, everyone. Be well. And I hope I see you on the other side of this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
I'd now like to welcome Tabitha Forte to testify and to anyone else who's on the Zoom who hasn't had the chance to speak. If we haven't called you, please use the Zoom raise hand function now. Tabitha Forte.
Your time will begin.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
On October 2021, I was placed on unpaid leave from Praxis Housing Initiative due to the vaccine mandate and I was officially fired as of Valentine's Day of this year. Since then, I have been not able to work in person in New York due to this unconstitutional mandate. I've worked throughout the entire pandemic and even contracted COVID from my direct supervisor. From hero shortly to zero, I have dedicated myself working to become a mental health counselor. I completed eight years' master's program and obtained my licensure last year to be told I'm unable to work in person. For over 10 years, I've worked as a counselor, exposed to all sorts of communicable diseases and I have never have I judged or I thought that I would be judged in America for health decisions I choose for myself. Not only do I have an extensive medical related, medical-related history to, with my nervous system, I also filed for a religious exemption with a letter from my pastor and was denied. CDC guidelines have changed. CDC has admitted these restrictions from being absolute nonsense. We, the people, should never allow these tyrants such as these circle back employees to control us. And they need to get together to talk about dropping this mandate. I find it incredibly funny that these employers who are in charge of making those decisions haven't come together to discuss these new guidelines, which were completely ridiculous to begin with. They come here with no COVID data and will sit in our faces paid and state that they will get back to us, letting us know how many people were fired or put on leave because their exemptions were denied. There should be, never have been a mandate in the first place. This is a free country. Vote for Lee Zeldin to save America. Let's go, Brandon.
I think we've heard from all of the Zoom registrants who are on the Zoom. I'm going to read through the remaining registrants to make sure we haven't missed anyone. So if you hear your name called and you're here and you haven't testified, please come up. Or if you're on the Zoom, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Tom Lapala, Jason Freed, Mary Moss, Audrey Dennis, Bridget Boyle, Ruth Vashilsky, Danielle McGuire, Danny, Krista O'Day, S. Julial, Patricia Liviola, Stacy Christopoulos, William Lee, Carrie McGovern Duffy, Gabriel Delmao, Jeremiah Sedeño, anonymous attendee, Arthur Roldan, Diana Haynes, Grace Lee, Michael Rogers, Jessica Tambor, Kira Krenitchen, Edgar Alfonszeka, Christine Schneider, Deanne Morgan, Ricardo Hinkel, Novem Ayung, and Michael Caine.
So I want to thank particularly Councilmember Ayella, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Arrolla, and of course, the amazing Carmen De La Rosa for staying here the whole time. And I also want to thank the amazing individuals who testified in person, of course, on the Zoom. I have to say, we will be constantly following up, not only on the mandate issue, but also on the issue of how is it that the city, in my opinion, is not doing more virtual? What are we doing about the pay scales? There's a long list that you heard us discuss earlier. We're very, very serious about making sure New York City has the best workforce in the world and we look forward to working with you. I want to turn it over to my fabulous co-chair, Carmen De La Rosa.
Well, just echoing the sentiments of Chair Brewer, thanking all of the colleagues and as well as all the people who came out today. As the Civil Service and Labor Chair, I know that our city is only as strong as our workforce and so we will be following up and making sure that the issues that were brought to this table today are followed up with. Thank you for coming to testify. We know it can be nerve-wracking. You've been incredibly patient and we appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you very much. Just here to adjourn. Thank you.